The June 2019 meeting of the City of Scranton zoning hearing board will now come to order. Will the secretary please take role?
Mr. Palmetessa?
Here.
Ms. Newcomb?
Here.
Mr. Marx?
Here.
Mr. Gatten?
Here.
Mr. Chairman?
Here. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic, which is the best, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the Pennsylvania State Sunshine Law, this board shall render its decision on each case either at the end of each hearing or within forty-five days of the hearing. If you are to give testimony in the case, please come to the podium, raise your right hand, and wait to be sworn in. After being sworn in, state your name and address and proceed with your testimony. Also, anyone given testimony who does not become a party to the case may obtain a written decision from the zoning office. I also have two announcements of law. If you are granted a variance or a special exception, you must wait thirty days from the date of our decision to obtain the necessary permits to start work. However, you may obtain a permit sooner by signing a waiver that any work done during that thirty-day period is at your own risk. A favorable decision by this board shall expire twelve months from the date of said authorization in accordance with Section 111i of the zoning ordinance. If you fail to obtain the necessary permits or do not comply with any or all conditions of said authorization, you must seek an extension. Is there any remarks?
I have, I have some remarks. I wasn't at the last meeting, but I was at several meetings before that, and I did watch some of the testimonies, and I noticed that in the past, especially last month, a lot of people that are coming to us from neighborhood associations, speaking about areas that are not in their neighborhood, people are speaking that are not two-hundred feet away, and it strictly says in our zoning ordinance that if you don't live two-hundred-and-fifty feet away, then you don't have any means, any reason to come to the podium. And if you're the South Side or West, Greenridge Neighborhood Association, something in West Side doesn't apply to you. So I, I think from now on, we need to stop people from talking that, that don't fit those criteria.
Dan, I gotta do some follow-up. I, I tend to agree with Ms. Newcomb in this. Sometimes we're open, I, I feel we're open up too far away from the, the project, and it doesn't necessarily mean this project. We, we see it more and more. So, Dan, unless they have standing, should they be able to give testimony in the case?
Okay. The ordinance says that the zoning board shall have the authority, if it chooses to exercise it, to determine who has standing before each case. Okay? So that doesn't eliminate anybody. It's, it goes on to say-
It's all discretion.
-City Council, the Planning Commission, a budding municipality whose boundaries are within two-hundred feet, and a property owner whose lots are within two-hundred feet, and the affected city-recognized neighborhood organization shall, at the absolute minimum, have standing. So they absolutely have standing. The board has discretion if they want to go beyond that.
So we, so it's, like, so like in the past, when a couple of people have spoken, I've said, and we've agreed-
Right. You can, you guys can decide if somebody has standing or not, if you want to hear from them.
Okay, 'cause I, I noticed last-
There, there is enough discretion in our ordinance.
Okay. And another thing, I don't know, the numbers two and four on the agenda, one of them is not even notarized. It's not, it's a completely incomplete application. You may have something more complete, but there's nothing that goes with it. I know they've been here before us, but they were denied, and now they come with a whole new application that's completely incomplete. And number four also, it's just a piece of paper, and this is a business they want to open, so that's another thing that I think that we need to crack down on is, if you don't have your application complete, then you shouldn't be allowed to come to the meeting unless everything is all together.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Mr. King, Mr. King, I don't know if you have the original of number two.
We have the original, what I believe is the original of number two, and it does not seem to be notarized.
So at this time-
I, I would make a motion that we, that we don't hear this case, 'cause a notary is, is one of the major things, is probably the most important thing of the application process. So I would like to make a motion that we, that we postpone or file a continuance on at least number two.
'Cause I, I don't see if, if the application fee was even paid at this time.
Yeah, it doesn't even, it doesn't even have a paid, yeah, so-
I, I know we've had some turnover in the office, so it's hard to put these records together.
Correct.
But what, what we have before us does not look like number two, and how about number four? Number two or number four have been notarized.
Number four is notarized.
Number four is notarized.
But there's no plan or anything that goes with it, so-
Okay.
I mean, I, I would like to make a motion that we don't hear either of these cases, but especially number two, 'cause we don't even know if it's been paid, and the notary is missing. Okay, so I'd like to make, make a motion that we do not hear case number two. Number, number two, yeah.
Number, number two is-
Dennis Ruttewitz.
Ruttewitz at fourteen thirteen, fourteen fifteen North Sumner Avenue.
It's, it's not notarized.
It's not notarized.
No, it's not complete at all. There's barely anything on the application.
It's an incomplete application.
He, he's, we hear, this will be your third time appearing, as we know, and the first time we tabled it, gentlemen, you know, we agreed to table it. The second time, it was voted no. So his next application has to be a brand-new application, start all over again. It's not a carryover application.
Right.
Was it notarized? Well-
It was, it was notarized the first time, otherwise we wouldn't-
Yeah, I didn't notarize it. Okay. It's your, your responsibility, and it says on the application that you are required to have it notarized, your signatures and everything notarized on it.
Yeah, and it's not signed either, this application.
No.
Well, you didn't, you didn't vote on that, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'd like to make a motion that we, that we-
I'll second it.
Number two. Yes. I made the second.
Mr. Palmetessa?
No.
Is a, a no?
A no is where- Correct.
Ms. Newcomb?
No.
Mr. Marx?
No.
Mr. Gatten?
No.
Mr. Chairman?
No. Vote of five to zero, we're gonna, we're gonna have to get the, the application fully filled out and notarized. Any other remarks?
No.
Dan, could you, a testament to the verification of postings, please?
I cannot. I didn't do the postings myself. A member of our staff posted every one, I'm told, but number four, which would be 501 North Kaiser, DMC Auto Repair, was not posted.
So, Dan, do we have an issue with it not being posted?
Uh, we certainly do.
Okay.
I definitely didn't see the posting anywhere yesterday.
You're here on that one. I think we have to postpone it to next month.
Um, it just, all we have is the front cover. We don't have any kind of a parking plan. We need to have all of that so that we can get an idea.
I, I think what they're looking for is a plot plan as to where the cars would be parked, where the customer parking would be, where the cars for sale would be. I, I would-
As early as possible.
As early as possible, get it to Mr. King if you would. That'll be fine.
That'd be fine.
Okay, so that is case number four, which is DMC Auto Repair Corp., 501 North Kaiser Avenue. So that case also will not be heard tonight.
Are we gonna go into old business now, Dan?
Yes.
Well, hang on, are we gonna, are we gonna table that as what we're doing? Do we have to take a vote to table that, or?
Well, I, I think Mr. Linehan just said we'll, he'll go for next, next month's meeting.
So do we need to take a vote on that, too?
I, I don't think so, 'cause it's, it was our fault we didn't post it. So we'll put it on next month's meeting.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
So, Dan, I guess we're gonna go to last month's case?
Correct.
I am gonna abstain from voting for a conflict of interest.
And I, I too am going to abstain, because I wasn't at the meeting, and I did not, I wasn't able to hear anybody's testimony. Yes, so we have two, uh, so we have three voters.
Let's bring a motion that we put, that we put it to a vote first.
I'll, I'll, I'll second it.
Okay. Mr. Palmetessa made the motion.
Yeah, and they were explaining at, at the last meeting, but we put the contingencies into the record at that time there. All the contingencies are in there. So do we take a motion to vote on this yet?
That's what you're doing right now.
I, I second the motion.
So, Mr. Palmetessa made the motion, and Ms. Newcomb seconded it.
We're not gonna take any testimony, but do you have a question?
My, my first question, it seems like the board has adopted, is enforcing a policy with regards to the applications themselves. I would renew the motion that I made last time, the objection to the fact that the application was not signed by a person associated with Sammy's foundation.
Okay, we, we already covered that at the last meeting.
And then, secondly, with regards to the abstention, there was an identification of a conflict of interest. Did Mr. Walsh state that he had a conflict of interest?
That's what he said, yes.
Is he at liberty to disclose the conflict and/or disclose whether I participated in deliberations on the matter?
Mr. Walsh, do you, are you at liberty to disclose the?
No.
Okay.
Did he participate in any deliberations of the-
We didn't have any.
They didn't have any deliberations.
Ready for a vote?
So we can vote whether we're gonna vote?
Okay, now-
We did.
Before we do that-
Yeah.
I think there were some stipulations that were put on last time, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the stipulations I had written down, that this would be an inpatient unit with no more than thirty residents, it would be a lockdown, that if any resident leaves, they must be accompanied by a counselor or within a fenced area, that no drugs would be dispensed other than doctor-ordered prescriptions, and it would not be an outpatient treatment facility of any type. We, they, are they the stipulations that we all-
To be only occupied by Lakeside?
Thirty residents.
Yeah, thirty residents, like, they have a different LLC, that's immaterial.
No, no, to be run by Lakeside. The representation is that Sammy has nothing to do with this facility, and that the operation is to be run by Lakeside.
What we would say, those stipulate, yes, and I understand his question, and we do want to answer it, so we're not hiding anything. Whoever is licensed for that facility, we understand that these conditions run with your approval, no matter who it is at any time, and it's not Sammy's, it is, I believe it is Lakeside going to be running it, but if for some reason they had a different LLC that was running it, these run with that condition. There's no, no moving away from that, and we're not trying to do that. We, we've agreed, and I think we've even offered those stipulations.
It, it goes with the property, not the operator.
And then, the, with regards to the representation of a lockdown, can, can somebody provide some instruction as to what a lockdown means?
Mr. Penitent, we, we heard all this-
Yeah.
-for six hours already. We're, we're ready to vote on this. The stipulations, and Dan, I just want clarity on the one stipulation that we did put on. It was that no drugs be dispensed to anyone outside that facility, outside the thirty residents.
Well, other, other than doctor-ordered prescription drugs for the people-
No, I'm talking about, no one can come, come there to receive-
Okay.
-drugs at all. So any drugs dispensed by-
Yes.
-in-house would be in-house only, not a treatment facility for outpatient.
That's, okay, I'll add that, I'll add that in the language.
That was, that was in there last time, but we're ready to vote.
With the stipulations, go ahead.
Mr. Palmetessa?
Yes.
Mr. Marx?
No.
I gotta stop, say, do we take a vote on whether we can vote yet? Do we ever get to that? We had a motion-
We made the motion in a second that we can vote.
We never voted on it.
Oh, all right, go ahead and vote on it.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. But I wanna make that motion again, that we vote.
Make a mo- motion that we vote?
I second the motion.
On what?
On the, on the issue.
On whether we can vote with, with the stipulations.
On whether we can vote with the stipulations.
We're, we're gonna take a vote on this, with the stipulations, yes.
And I second that.
Mr. Penitent, I'm sorry to bother you, Ken, but Ms. Newcomb is making a second. Is she voting on this matter?
I'm not voting on it.
She's, she's not voting on this matter.
I'm just seconding that we can vote.
Should we have a, a second from one of the two over there?
Second.
Okay. All right, now let's go.
Just the three of us again.
Mr. Palmetessa?
Yes.
Mr. Marx?
No.
Mr. Gatten?
This is, now, let's get clarity here, 'cause I think we're a little off again. This is just to initiate, okay, we're gonna do it right. You can moan and groan all you want, we're gonna do it right. This is to initiate the vote.
This is just a vote.
Oh, this, we're on the vote now?
No, no, just to initiate the vote.
Initiate the vote.
Yes.
Let's, let's open that door again, please, and take the vote.
Okay, let's do it again. This is to initiate the vote.
Do you need the motion and the-
The motion with the stipulations.
Make the motion with the stipulations.
I second it.
Okay, so now, Bob?
Yes.
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 Okay. Now we're taking the vote on the issue.
Okay.
I made the motion?
No, you, you just have to vote now.
Mr. Palmetessa?
Yes.
Mr. Marx?
No.
Mr. Gattens?
No, and I explain my vote before everyone, you know, we get out of here. I listened to testimony for six hours. I've actually watched it on YouTube, because this was the most intense case that ever came before me on this board in the three, three and a half years I'm here. And it was hard to separate your personal feelings from this, because that's what came into this case, the need and not my neighborhood. And it was just tough to separate that down, but after researching everything that I did, I, I just felt that it did not meet the requirements for a special exception. And some of the testimony just went back and forth on answers, and it just left that gap open for me to, to vote no on this, so as I said, I vote no on this case.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. A vote of two to one, it is denied. Thank you. May we please call the next case?
Number one on the agenda is Arsenio Velez, five-
All right, Dan, maybe we'll give it like one minute for everybody to disperse.
There's your plot plan.
Thanks, you're on.
Next month.
See you next month.
Okay.
Kurt?
No, 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 this is for-
Oh, oh, okay, that, okay, you already have, you have a completed application from theirs.
Yeah. There was no plan, yeah, yeah. It was notarized and everything, so that's why.
Okay.
Dan, could we, please, call the first case, please?
Number one on the agenda is Arsenio Velez, five forty-three, five forty-five, Fourth Avenue. Applicant seeks variance to open the property for three units in an R2 zone.
Is Mr. Velez here? Anybody from-
Guys, can we please quiet down out there, please? Will you, please, raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Name and address, please.
Arsenio Velez, one thirteen Cabin Ridge Road, Holy, PA, one eight four two eight. Cabin Ridge Road, Holy, PA, one eight four two eight.
You may proceed.
I'm seeking variance on a property that I, that we're working on right now. It was a two-family with a commercial storefront, and we're just trying to change it into a three-family, put the commercial storefront into the third family.
Yeah, that doesn't sound like that side. Just checking to make sure it's on.
Okay.
Okay, got it.
No problem.
Dan, I have a question.
Yes.
When we look at this as a two-unit and a single-family, do we need parking for the single-family?
The single-family has parking on the right-hand side.
Yeah, the single-family-
It has its own driveway.
Right, that's all it needs for the single-family.
Do we need any, though?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Um-
Thank you.
It's the, the, yeah, it-
It's a, it's a two-unit now, and you wish to make it into three?
It's a two-unit, and it also had a commercial storefront. So I'm just, I'm just looking to turn its commercial storefront into another unit, that's all.
Okay.
So we're gonna free units in the one building?
Correct.
And then the single-family?
No, the, the two fa- the, the single-family is separate by itself.
Okay.
It's its own entity.
What's, what's, what's the address of that?
That's five forty-nine, Fourth Avenue.
Okay, 'cause that's, that's on, on the application, we just have five forty-three.
Five forty-three, five forty-five is the only thing I'm here for variance.
Okay, so-
They're two separate properties, I just purchased them together.
Oh, so you do own four, five forty-nine?
They're together, yes.
Oh, so, okay, so that explains the driveway situation.
Yes, we were just trying to show it so you knew that the single-family was also going into that driveway, that it had its own.
So what exactly was your plan for, for the parking for the, the apartments?
The parking, we were gonna do the, the side-by-side going in. Um, we have, we're gonna have six spots, plus we also have a drive, we also have a garage in the back.
The, the driveway that sits in between them?
Yes.
Is your measurement eighteen feet from building to building?
From building to building, correct.
That's, that's not enough room to back out.
You don't have the room to back out to put your parking spots there. Your parking spots are nine by eighteen.
Uh-huh.
You're, so what he's saying is that your driveway width-wise is the length that a parking spot is supposed to be, so there's no room to back out, and you have them going in diagonal and then backing out onto the main road.
So what about coming in straight forward?
What's the plan for that garage? What's the plan for that garage?
The length of the garage?
No, what's the plan for it? Is it staying, or is it coming down?
It's staying.
Okay.
The garage is also staying.
Now, let me ask you a question about the dumpster that, that's in there. Is that, is that for-
We were, we were finishing up five forty-nine, which I had all the permits for.
Yeah, I, I-
Yeah, that's what we were working on over there, yes.
So you wanna use the driveway for five forty-nine as extra, as additional spots for five forty-three, five forty-five?
No, 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 I was just showing it that it was its own entity, one, so you didn't think that any of the parking was for five forty-nine also?
Okay, 'cause I mean, you have it on here, so it just looks like you were planning to use it as parking.
No.
What do we need, eighteen? What do you need to stack them?
Do you know what the length of that driveway is?
It's about, probably a hundred and twenty feet.
Okay.
It's the length of the property. It goes all the way from one end to the street.
But how, how long is it? I'm looking at the eighty feet they have marked there on, on the five forty-nine, is that the same measurement for five forty-three and five forty-five? Would you say is that a safe assessment?
Um, yeah, I would say it's-
So actually, alongside the house, we'll say you have eighty feet, and the rest is, the rest is open after that to go, where you can get into that garage or the backyard area.
Yes, it has its own in the back, yes.
Well, my concern is, I, I, I don't, I don't think you have the parking in that driveway. I mean, if it's only eighteen feet wide, and if your angle of the car is in that way, you're backing out, and we're looking at different ways of doing it, if we're looking at your parking diagram here, and that's what we're discussing up here, and unless you-
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead, Sean, jump in.
I was just gonna ask, Dan, I, I know we can't stack, Dan, but if he was to park to the left side of the driveway, and he still had the, the access, the back-
I'm agreeing with you, I'm looking at it, it's at least a hundred feet in length, so if you go parallel, you know?
Correct.
One, one after another, you could get four cars in there, plus one in the garage, would give you the five cars.
So two on each side, one against one, against one other?
No, just, just four right against the, the house at four twenty, or four, five forty-five. You could put four right against that house.
Right, he'd need twenty-one feet of each space, right? Am I correct on that?
He needs eighteen, eighteen.
How many spots does he need?
Nine by eighteen, so it's, it would be eighteen one.
I thought.
So he would have eight-
He has the room if he utilizes the garage.
He, he definitely has room for four parallel parking, plus one in the garage.
Also, how, do you know how wide that space is on the other side of the house? It's just grass right now?
Do I know what?
How wide that is?
Which, which space you're talking about?
On the other side of the house, with, where the driveway isn't. That leads you to the backyard.
Yeah, I'm not sure it, whose that is property line-wise, I have no-
Oh, so you don't know whose property?
Yeah, you're talking about the one to the left-hand side.
Yeah, because I was gonna say, if you paved, paved that, you could make that into a square.
Yeah, I'm not, I haven't looked it up, I haven't even checked it yet since the purchase to find out even if that is, that was not, I think it's just an easement, actually.
Do you understand how we said park them straight?
Yes, I, I understand exactly what you're saying, yep.
Okay.
Well, if we look at, I, I just wanna make sure we're doing everything right here, because with that, if he parks them parallel, he still needs a twelve-foot aisle. Then at eighteen feet, he's not gonna have that.
True, he'd only have an eight, a nine-foot aisle.
So it's three feet.
So he'd need a three-feet variance for that.
I mean, we, and we know we don't need a buffer, he owns each side of us.
He owns on each side, yeah, so he doesn't need a buffer.
Was there any room to, to add a couple of feet to that driveway to the left or right?
No.
And Dan, I'm, I'm looking at six oh three B, the minimum length shall be twenty-one feet for parallel parking, so he would have to have twenty-one feet per spot?
Is that, was it, I'm sorry, I wasn't-
Yeah.
What, what section was that?
Six oh three B, uh, number one.
All right, that's the minimum length, so the length that they're asking, for twenty-one feet instead of eighteen, he would still have-
He still has, yeah.
-room for four, yeah.
If we're gonna do the variance for the three feet, so I just wanna make sure we have everything in that form.
Yeah, that, that's going, going front to back.
Yep, yep.
And he's twenty-one feet, so four cars is eighty-four. He's got a hundred.
Yep.
So he's okay there.
So where, where we put this in the car?
In the garage.
In the garage?
Yeah, you can also have the garage in the back, yes.
Now, you said that it's a two-family home, and there's a business storefront?
There's a business storefront on here.
So that's gonna be the third apartment?
That's gonna be the third apartment, correct.
Bless you.
Bless you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to call attention to the gigantic hole in your foundation, I don't know if you wanna...
Yeah, oh, I know already.
Get a... And there's all sorts of doors and windows and anything against that.
We're gonna be redoing that property.
Like, I just wanted to make sure you weren't starting work before.
No, 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 I've been working on the other, I've been working on the other two properties.
Okay.
As of right now, that's why I have permits for those, but I haven't pulled anything for that one yet.
Okay.
Is there anybody else that'd like to give testimony in this case? Just step to the side. You raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so help you God?
I do.
Name and address.
Edward Chomko Senior, 262 Railroad Avenue. I don't know if you have what I have here. May I approach and just give you this, and you take a look at it?
How far are you away from this property?
I'm repres... I'm the president of the West Scranton Neighbors Association.
Did you wanna give any testimony, or...
I think the picture speaks for itself. There are a few neighbors here within a hundred feet of this property, maybe they wish to speak. I'm representing the association, I was asked to come in.
Anybody else wanna give testimony in this case?
Oh, wait, is it the... Mr. Chomko? Is it the association's preference to keep it as a commercial spot?
No, it's their preference to keep it as residential.
Okay.
As an R2.
Okay, but right now, there's a commercial space in there.
You have to know the building, sir?
Okay.
It was run by the people that lived in the house that he's remodeling, and that was a ceramic classroom. It was a combination of the classroom and an apartment for one of their sons.
Okay.
But that person, isn't this gentleman here?
I'm sorry?
That person, isn't this gentleman here? You said the person who ran it before?
No, they're deceased.
They're deceased, so this is a person who's probably well aware that this place needs a lot of renovations?
I don't know, he said it was a... It was a commercial front, yes, it was, but that was a combination of an apartment also. All it was was two rooms used as a commercial, and two rooms used as a place for one of the sons. On the first floor. And the second floor was one apartment.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wants to give testimony on this? Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so help you God?
I do.
Name and address, please?
My name is Roseanne Flynn, 529 Fourth Avenue in Scranton.
Thank you.
I live two houses up on the same block. You're doing a nice job fixing the house. Lot of remodeling, you could tell, but the in-question, the addressing question is so decrepit. How in the world is, is that going to be... I hope you have a lot of money to do it. My fear is that you're gonna put a Band-Aid on it, rent it out. It's not safe, it cannot be sanitary or healthy in any way. I hope so. In that case, we'd love someone, families in there, I would, shouldn't say "we," I would, because it, you know, why have the place empty and just, you know, rotting to the core?
That's a question we all ask, but just so you know, an occupancy permit would never be distributed unless the inspectors came and it was completely up to code, so...
Lots of homes are inhabited that are decrepit, that are awful, and I fear that that's what this would be.
This is a different case, 'cause he's here now, so it's a have-to, it's a must.
Mr. Velez, was this condemned?
Yes, it was.
Okay, so it has to be brought up to code.
So if it's condemned, he's gonna have to go through a vigorous process to get it uncondemned?
Okay, okay, then good luck.
Thank you.
The parking, oh, I'm sorry, the parking sta... Parallel parking? Man, oh man, what... So if there's three cars and I'm the last car parked, I'm gonna tell the two other people, "Come in and pull out so I can pull out"? They're not gonna do that.
No, they're gonna parallel park, and they're gonna, and they're gonna, and they're gonna, they're gonna pull forward, like you're...
Just like you would on a street.
Is there enough room to do that?
Just if you've ever seen that back alley there, behind the city, the... This building, there's a narrow space.
Yeah.
And people parallel park there, they just, you know, there's gonna be the...
Doesn't seem like there's enough room to me.
There has to be enough space in between each car for the cars to be able to get out.
Because there is no parking on that street. You know, that, okay, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to give testimony on this? So, Dan, like, we have...
I think we have one more question, and that would be the size of the apartments, the square footage of the apartments.
You can go back to the podium, speak into the microphone.
That's on your plan that you submitted?
That's in the plan, yeah, I submitted the sizes of the apartments, the rooms, every room.
We have room sizes, but if you could, what's the square footage of each one?
Excuse me?
We have the room sizes, but do you have the total square footage of each apartment?
Offhand, I wouldn't write it right now, I wouldn't.
Dan, with this being condemned, would he have to, have to be over six hundred feet when they inspected this, or...
No, the condemnation goes to the quality of the work that he's put into it to rehab it, but it's our job to make sure it complies with zoning.
Could we make it a stipulation that each unit is over six hundred square feet, or do we have to have him come back with some...
Well, let's see if we can do a calculation.
I'm doing it now.
Paul's doing one now. Can I ask you a question? How do you not know what the square footage of your house is?
It's, well, I'm doing the work on the house and I haven't even started it yet, that's why. When they asked me to submit everything, I just gave you every single measure.
Are you the owner?
Yes. I just gave every measurement to the, to every room, just so you knew what it was. That's what they asked me to do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Which apartment is the smallest? Is the first floor apartment one?
The one in the back, first floor back is the smallest one.
I did the math, and I got about six hundred and eighty-six square feet.
For the one in the back, correct?
For the one in the back, yeah.
Yeah, that's about right, yes.
And that's the smallest one.
That's the smallest out of the three. Yeah, the one upstairs is probably about fifteen hundred, and the other one in the front is probably about close to a thousand.
Okay, so each apartment is more than six fifty?
How many bedrooms in each apartment?
Excuse me?
How many bedrooms in each apartment?
The back bedroom, the back apartment has one bedroom, the other apartment on the first floor has two bedrooms, and upstairs has two bedrooms.
I'm pretty sure you're calling it right out here, ten seventy on the square footage for the two-bedroom apartments, and the one-bedroom is seven thirty-five, according to your drawing here. That's at the ledger at the bottom of the drawing in the left-hand corner.
Yeah. I did the second one, and I'm not even finished, and I'm already above six hundred.
Yeah, I think everything's above six hundred. Yep. Dan, do we have to put in a, we're gonna allow the three feet in the driveway?
Or could we just vote the both variants?
Well, it's one project, so if we're allowing the parallel parking, that...
If we're allowing the three feet.
It goes without saying that...
Does he have to request a variance, Dan, at this time?
It's all part of his application.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to vote.
Mr. Paul Mottessa?
Yes.
Ms. Newcomb?
Yes.
Mr. Marx?
Yes.
Mr. Gattens?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, vote of five to zero, you've been approved.
Thank you.
Good luck. I think number two we're skipping, correct?
Correct.
So we're on to number three.
Number three is JBAS Realty LLC. Applicant seeks a variance to restore 930 Meadow Avenue into mid-rise apartments, thirty-seven units, with a maximum square footage of seven hundred and thirty-five square feet, R1A zone.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so help you God?
Yes.
Name and address.
Joseph DeCipio. Home address is 207 Blue Shudders Road, Royenbrook Township.
Thank you.
I am the architect project manager, manager for this project. It's a commercial industrial conversion in South Scranton on the corner of Meadow and Maple Street. The, it's the former Giant Floor Building. I have some photographs that I could give to the board of existing conditions. The building, which I, as I said, was the former Giant Floor Building, and before that, the Gold Star Building in South Scranton, was vacant. It's a three-story brick building, operated as a commercial business for years, it's about eighty years old, and had had many additions that were put onto it over the years, and recently it became vacant, and that then was purchased by JBAS Realty, and the intent is to convert that structure into residential one- and two-family apartments, one- and two-unit apartments. It's a three-story structure, approximately fifteen thousand square feet per floor, so three floors is about thirty-nine thousand square feet each unit. The one bedrooms would be approximately seven hundred and fifty square feet, the two units would range from about a thousand to twelve hundred square feet. The intent is to call it a senior housing complex, meaning fifty-five or older. The application is made to, you know, convert it into this resident multifamily apartment building. It is in a R1A zone currently, and it operated as a commercial business, which has since been vacant, which I believe then it would, the board would view that as deferring back to the original zoning. There is a total of thirty-seven units in the building. If you're looking at the ratio for parking of one and a half per unit, that would give us a requirement of about fifty-six parking stalls. The current plan accommodates sixty-five parking stalls. There's an adjacent paved area that was a parking lot and will remain to be a parking I do have a site plan, and I don't know if that was submitted with the application or not.
Yeah, we have it.
Yeah, the floor plans were...
Okay, the corner, this is Maple and Meadow, and this building is visible from eighty-one, you could see it with the sign on top. The existing parking lot is over here, and the existing L-shaped building is here. There was some existing structures that were added in the seventies, and there was a, that has since been demolished. There was a permit for demolition, which has already taken place, so the existing seventies structures have been removed. The original nineteen-twenty structures are going to be, remain and refurbished. And again, the existing parking is gonna be utilized, and that's where we have about sixty-five stalls to accommodate the fifty-six required parking stalls.
What about the green structure that's on there? It looks like it's a...
Yeah, it's a metal building.
Yeah.
The intent there is to demolish that as well later. It's gonna be used for staging and storage during construction. I do have a rendering I can show you. The name, the name of the project is Lofts at Village Square. So this is the view from the parking lot. The center entry area is going to be a small addition, which will accommodate the lobby, and the, all the structure that is surrounding that is original. It will be maintained, and then essentially the entire building, the only thing that's gonna be really utilized is the shell of the building, the walls, and the roofs and the floors. The windows and all the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing is going, is already removed underneath the demolition permit. The new addition of the lobby, this would make the entry here, you'll enter there and then gain access to an elevator, which will take you down half a flight to the lower-level apartments, or up to the second and third floor. And basically, everything else will be new. All the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, sprinklers, windows will all be new. And of course, that will be the building permit and plan review process that will address all the code issues related to life safety, sprinklers, plumbing, and et cetera.
Just out of curiosity, will you have, like, fire doors on each level? I'm asking this, 'cause my mother lives in a senior living, and they have, lots of people set things on fire constantly. In order to not evacuate the entire building, they shut a door, and only that, you know, area, will you be having any of those?
Right.
I don't know what the appropriate term for the doors is, but...
Yeah, there, the gray structure in the rendering is actually an existing fire stair, which is being maintained, and then there are two other fire stairs in the building. I'm sorry. So the exiting is gonna be accommodated through three different existing stair towers. I think what you're, I don't know...
It's gonna be, so seniors, they don't, they don't move very fast, they're not all fifty-five, some of them are...
Right.
They don't, if they don't have to evacuate the entire building, if the fire is, like, maintained to one apartment, there's doors they can shut, like, kinda like at a hospital.
I think that'll be up to the fire code people to...
Well, that's, that's what I was...
See what's necessary.
Yeah, it would probably fall underneath the building code requirements. Hospitals are much larger typically, so they do have these fire separations that you're talking about.
Right.
I don't know if that would come into play here. That decision really hasn't been made yet. You know, the frame is still there, and it really hasn't been decided, quite frankly. I don't know if I could say that. I don't know if I could say that. The frame is there. I don't know what the intent, you know, the decision of tearing it completely off or not is, is not made at this point.
Again, if a billboard was to be put up, it would have to come on our, our zoning ordinance to be approved.
What's your, your completion date for this project?
Well, depending on approvals, you know, it's probably about a year construction window, once it, you know, gets fully underway. Basically, like I said, it's, it's just demolition right now. And then, once we go through the, all the planning and then we'll have to go through plan review for the building code issues and then, you know, we could start construction.
Is that all the testimony that you have?
Yes.
Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to give testimony on this case? There's not?
Well, then I'll make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Paul Mottessa?
Yes.
Ms. Newcomb?
Yes.
Mr. Marx?
Yes.
Mr. Gattens?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Vote of five to zero, you've been approved.
Good luck.
Joe, just, this project also has come before the planning commission as a land development when you convert a building into residential units. That's more on the civil end than the architectural.
We're gonna take a five-minute recess before this, this case comes up. Mr. King, may please call the next case?
I'm gonna do my second page. Mr. Chairman, Brick Investment Corporation seeks a variance, a special exception and validity challenge for 1800 North Washington Avenue. Dislocation in the former Scranton School for the Deaf. Applicants seek zoning board approval for a mixed-use restaurant, office space, event space, dormitories and recreation campus, institutional light zone.
Thank you.
If I may, before we proceed, attorney and I had a conversation off the record and I have a few procedural matters. My name is Attorney Mary Dempsey. I represent the Greenwich Revitalization Committee.
Can you go up to the microphone so we can...
Yes, they told me to do that. My mistake. Is this okay? Can you hear me now?
No, I wanna pull it a little closer.
Yeah, and there's also one at the podium, too, that, they put the News Watch 16 one there, too.
That'll make life easier. Is this better now? Okay. So procedural, I'd like to bring up a few things. And actually, Mrs. Newcomb, it comes based on your comment to a previous individual who was in here. You had said that the application was not notarized and for that reason, you weren't going to accept the hearing today. Now, Brick Investment Corporation, it certainly is notarized. I have no objection to that. However, I do note that the list of all affected property owners is absolutely empty. And I checked to make sure and I saw that the zoning ordinance specifically says, under 112A, 3B, that the applicant shall provide the city with a list of such property owners. And thus far, I haven't seen it. We did a Freedom of Information Act request to get these and it was not included or attached. So for the same reason that you felt that other application was fatal, I would argue that this application is fatal as well. That's just one procedural matter I have. I don't know if you'd like to address that or you'd like me to get into my second one.
If I can respond, my name is Attorney William Jones. I represent the applicant.
We're gonna ask you to do the same thing with the microphone, please.
All right. Do you want me over there?
You could probably, it works a lot better over there.
That'd be fine.
If I can, with regard to the application, we had a review of it by your zoning officer. I would ask Mr. King if he could, I actually supplied the names of all the butters. We had Dave Durkovic prepare a zoning map and he listed all of them. And we provided that particular list and it was attached to the application. I actually went in and looked at the application to make sure it was still there and I just took a look and it's in his hand over there now. So we did supply them all.
Mr. King, you wanna comment?
There is a list. I'm not, I'm not gonna count them here, but there's much too many that would fit on the face of the application. I guess probably about 30, give or take.
Do we know when that was provided? Because when we did the Freedom of Information request, it certainly wasn't provided to us. An empty application was provided to us.
I, I don't know who responded to that. It wasn't me. This was in the application and in the meeting file when I got possession of it last week.
And Mr. King, may I ask you another thing? I know that you're obligated to give individual notice to the neighbors. Was that sent via regular mail, certified mail? How was that sent out?
I didn't send them out myself, so I would assume that typically it's done by regular mail.
Okay. And I live directly across from the state school for the deaf within probably 15 feet, let alone 200 feet. And my notice was just thrown in the front of my door. Is that how most of the notices were provided?
Sometimes they are, they are hand-delivered.
I know Jack's, that was here prior, he did hand-deliver a lot of the...
He did hand-deliver because a lot of times they would come back marked if the, if the tax assessment information changed or something. He, he felt it was better to, to hand-deliver them.
So he would hand-deliver them, not to the person, but to the front door of the home?
To, to the property, yes.
Okay. The second question I have, and Mr. King, both you and Mr. Pennatar received a copy of this. It's a June 10th letter. And I think it's probably better off if we determine this now, as it may or may not decide what we'll do with the rest of the hearing. But we, in that letter noted that, under the law, it specifically says that the zoning board shall send this matter to the City Planning Commission. And I also quoted the statute. And we're asking that that be done prior to any further zoning hearing, so that the City Planning Commission can take a look at it and take a look at the issues regarding traffic generation, noise, fumes, odor, glare, hours of operation, the proximity of the requested use to the neighbors. That's all part of what they can do and then they can make a recommendation back. In my letter, you als, I also noted that the same benefit was also provided to the last hearing that was here, that I believe was the Forever Sammy Foundation. That's what happened here. And I think it was you, Mr. King, who authored a very detailed letter in that, that matter on behalf of the City Planning Commission. So we're asking for that, as well as a referral to the city engineer, which is also mandated under the zoning ordinance and has not yet happened. May I have an answer on either or both of those requests?
If I can, may I address that?
Once again, my name is Attorney William Jones. I represent the applicant. We supplied the materials to the city and to ensure that the planning commission actually had the matter before it. They didn't deal with it in the May meeting. I went to the June meeting. They entertained it. They took a motion to accept our application. I put on the same materials with regard to light, noise, traffic, the particular aspects of it. So with regard to the ordinance, it was complied with. With regard to the planning commission that they have it. I also point out, it says they may or may not send you anything back, but you still go forward with the application. As you're aware, this has a long history. It has gone back since last year with regard to it. So there was ample time with regard to that. But to answer that, the planning commission has had the materials. They generally attend the planning commission meeting as well. I don't know whether they have reviewed this or not. But once again, that is not a, doesn't stop you from having your hearing and we're here tonight to have that. But just rest assured, we went to the planning commission and we gave them the material and a presentation. Thank you.
If I may, Mr. King, you were kind enough to issue an email, which was very open, honest and transparent. And you indicated that, yes, they did show up. They were not on the agenda. There were notes, no notes taken of the meeting. There was not a transcriber. They asked you to take the application and that was all that was done. No other documents were looked at or reviewed. So I do believe that is a misstatement by the attorney. And if you'd like to clean, clear that up at all, Mr. King, I'd appreciate it.
I'll say, Mr. Jones presented a copy of his application with all the attachments, which he has information on each of those factors to be looked at. The planning commission informed Mr. Jones, because that it was not on our agenda and there was no notice of it, they weren't gonna take any action on it. So they just accepted the paperwork. They took no action. And as I said in the email, if the zoning board so chooses to ask the planning commission for a recommendation, they'll schedule it for their July, or for their June 26th meeting.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I would again renew our request that number one it either be sent to the City Planning Commission or number two, that the city engineer issue a recommendation as well, which is also available under the zoning ordinance.
If I can, only because of the cost to my client. Obviously, this is a very expensive project. At the request of the city, we withdrew the last application. That was back in November. So everyone could have ample time to review our plans and application. We actually submitted this back in April. So we don't want to be held accountable whether it wasn't looked at in April or May. I made sure that they had it in June. All the planning commission has to do in June is accept the application. They actually liked it. Mr. King was there. They said they were very much liked it. They, they, they... No, they actually said it and he can confirm it. But putting that aside, what they did say, they wanted to go forward and Mr. King pointed out that they legally met their responsibilities, that it was an advertised meeting. They added it as an agenda item. They asked for a public comment before they went forward. We put the presentation on with regard to it. And on top of that, they understood that this has to go forward because obviously, it's quite expensive. This is the second time that we're here and the third month that the application was there and everybody knew when this particular date was. So they were comfortable accepting their particular application so we could move forward.
I don't know if the zoning board members can see Mr. King's...
I think Dan's gonna clarify this up for a little bit.
Well, I'll, I'll speak on behalf of the planning commission. I was at the meeting. I don't, they did not add the item to their agenda and they didn't take any action on the item, other than to accept it for review and possibly schedule it for, for, for a hearing.
They actually made a motion. They accepted the, and they voted unanimously to accept our application.
To accept the application for review.
And I presented my materials at it.
You, you presented a copy of the application. Yes, you did.
Was there any public comment, Mr. King?
No, there was no public in attendance.
No public in attendance because it had not been publicized?
Correct.
Thank you. May I renew my request?
Just so everybody understands this, I said, well, no, the chairman asked, he said, "Do we actually advertise this as an agenda item?" And Mr. King said, "No, we advertise whenever your meetings are. Maybe it's the beginning of the year, maybe it's two weeks before, whatever they do." He said, "Well, what do we actually do?" He said, "Well, we add it to our website." So he said...
We post our, we post our agendas on our website prior to the meetings.
Yeah, well, then that was it. So that was the one item that, I guess it wasn't posted in the hall. That's why they, as a procedural point, they actually voted to make it an agenda item. So they did it because I explained to them, because of the time, and, and we've been very diligent in doing this. And we've, this is our third month on it. So, and I understand if they want to go back to the planning. I explained to them that night, "We're not going back." So this is moving forward on the timelines that the NPC has. So, and they understood that and they, they appreciated that.
Mr. Pennatar, Mr. King, is this for clarification, is for, and I might be wrong, this really has nothing to do with our board here tonight. We can continue testimony and just not vote on it. This goes back to the planning commission.
I believe that'd be correct.
The ordinance, the ordinance says, "The planning commission shall be provided with an opportunity to review any proposed special exception prior to a decision by the zoning board," meaning that we could take testimony, but we can't make a final decision until the planning commission has had an opportunity to review. Now, the next question is, have they had an opportunity to review? Mr. Jones is saying yes. Attorney Dempsey is saying no. I'll leave that part of it. I, I can't answer that one way or another, but my recommendation would be that we take the testimony, but hold off on the decision until you get something back from the planning commission.
Again, for clarity, let's make sure that everyone knows that the opinion of the planning commission does not hold us to that vote or their opinion. It's not, their opinion is not binding to us.
Right, it's just a recommendation. Correct.
Thank you.
All right. And I'll be very brief on my final one. We all know that notice has to be given adequately and advertised. This is a picture of what was on the telephone poles out in front of Marywood University. And it stated very accurately in one area that it was seeking a variance. However, I noticed that that also conflicts with what was in, I'm assuming, the Scranton Times, where called a validity variance. So to the extent that the notices are not consistent with one another and don't say the same thing, again, we're objecting that proper notice wasn't given and that it's defective. Thank you.
Okay, so noted on the record.
So we're gonna proceed with the case and...
Correct.
If I can, I would like to make part of the record the deed to the property as applicant's exhibit number one, the Hennemuth survey, which would be applicant's exhibit number two, and the tax map for the particular area, just so we can figure out where it's at. Yes.
Was that provided to us before?
They were at the first hearing, but they'd have to go back into the, to the record. We only have the, the one here. But I do have blown up exhibits for you.
Reset expense budget.
We'll get to it. If I can, I'd like to call my first witness. Would you please state your name for the record?
I'm sorry. Will you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Name and address, please.
My name's Hillary Levitt. I live at 23 West 73rd Street in New York, New York 10023.
Thank you.
Just spell your last name, please.
L-E-V for Victor, I-T-T Thomas Thomas.
Now, Ms. Levitt, I know that you've testified before this board at the last hearing. If you can, just if you would reiterate, what's your relationship to Brick Investment Corporation?
I'm a consultant for Brick Investment Corporation and its affiliates with seven years' experience in commercial real estate and banking.
And are you familiar with the application that's been filed?
Yes.
Can you please explain for the board, an introduction to the development in, in the course of your testimony, if you could explain some of the exhibits that I see you have on the board there?
Sure. So the property that we're here to speak about today is most known with the address 1800 North Washington Avenue. It's approximately 8.5 acres and is located in the city of Scranton and the borough of Dunmore. The property consists, as you can see in front of you, of nine connected buildings, of which one of the buildings is located in Scranton, which we're here to talk to you about today, and eight are located in the borough of Dunmore. The unimproved parts of the property have a park-like character with courtyards, trees, green space and a stream. The eight buildings located in Dunmore are the original buildings and built and expanded through the late 1800s to the mid-1900s.
And if I may, just to respond in part with regard to a validity variance that's presently before this board, it's an integrated property and therefore, case law supports that we're allowed to offer testimony in that particular...
I think it's, since it's all part of the one project, we're gonna allow that testimony. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Can you do, thank you. Where was I? Right. In 1974, Building One was built. Building One is the building that we're referring to that's in Scranton. And today, all of the buildings are connected via enclosed walkways, making it a completely integrated campus. The property was originally the Pennsylvania State Oral School for the Deaf, and in 1976 was renamed the Scranton State School for the Deaf, owned by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. In 2011, Marywood University purchased the property. Marywood subsequently used the property for educational purposes. In 2016, Heinerfeld Commercial Real Estate listed the property for sale on behalf of Marywood University. John Cognetti, on behalf of Heinerfeld, is here today to speak to the sale process of the building. Now, specific to Scranton, Building One is a three-story steel and concrete structure, with concrete masonry and a brick envelope, and has an approximate footprint of 9,500 square feet. The building in total is 33,940 square feet in size. During its tenure as a Scranton State School for the Deaf, the first floor consisted of a lobby, community room, cafeteria, office space, and classrooms. The second and third floors consisted of, but not limited to, office space, classrooms, and dorms. Now to address what we are proposing for Building One, and the development as a whole.
Can you, excuse me, can you back away from the microphone a little bit there?
Sorry, too close, too far? Thank you.
Too, too, a little too close.
Okay. Urban Smart Growth, which is an affiliate of Brick Investment Corporation, its vision for the redevelopment is to create an intergenerational mixed-use community. We want to repurpose these beautiful buildings into, you know, a community where people can come, live, work, and play, and really contribute to the surrounding neighborhood. All the existing structures will be rehabilitated and repurposed. To the extent possible, the green space and landscaping will remain so the project continues to blend in with its surroundings. Throughout the nine connected buildings, our current plan consists of the following: 69 residential units, including 12 live-work units, 13 offices, a 40-seat restaurant, a coffee bar, a gallery space, a resident fitness center, a bed and breakfast, indoor and outdoor event space, and 282 off-street, on-site parking spaces, of which 117 are located in Scranton and 165 located in Dunmore. The main pedestrian entrance to the project, and specifically Building One, will be located on-site, off-the-street, and adjacent to the Scranton parking lot. I'm just going to step around to point that out where it is. 655 square foot addition is proposed to enhance the pedestrian in that entryway I just pointed out, and Jerry, our architect, will speak more detail in that in a few moments.
If I can, just to interject at this point, I would ask that it be marked applicant's exhibit number four. I saw that you had approached the easel, and it refers to a master plan, is that correct?
Correct.
I'd like to, Mr. King, ask that it be marked.
We designed the project to have the main entrance where it is, to utilize the North Washington driveway, which is already existing, direct vehicle and pedestrian traffic away from the street and into the property to minimize any associated noise and congestion for the residents along that section of North Washington Avenue. Also, this entry point is intuitive slash user-friendly, because it is connected to the physical and historical address of the property, 1800 North Washington Avenue. We are proposing the following uses for Building One's ground floor. First, a 380-square-foot coffee bar. We envision this coffee bar to be a place where residents, neighbors, and visitors can purchase a beverage and pastry on the go. There will also be a couple of seats available if people want to sit and enjoy their purchase. The coffee bar will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., seven days a week. Secondly, a 4,640-square-foot gallery. We envision this space for artists from the property and the neighborhood to display their work, where residents and visitors can come and enjoy it. The gallery will be open for visiting when either the coffee bar or restaurant is open. Also on the la, sorry, also on the ground floor, we are proposing a restaurant with a dining area of 12,000, sorry, 1,240 square feet. It will have approximately 40 seats, which we expect is actually less than the previous use would have had. Food and drink will be served by servers to the tables where the patrons are seated. The restaurant will be open from 11:00 a.m. until 12:00 a.m., seven days a week, is what we are proposing. We believe the key to creating a community is offering tenants, neighbors, and visitors a place to socialize and convene, to really integrate it, to become part of the neighborhood. This has been proven time and time again with previous projects that we have done, where there have been restaurants. For this project, the logical and best place for a restaurant is in the building's ground floor, as there is existing kitchen infrastructure that can be repurposed, and adjoining cafeteria space that used to be a dining area that we can use also as a dining area for the restaurant.
If I can, just to interrupt, maybe it would be helpful when you talk about an existing area. With the existing, existing conditions, it may be made part of the record. Talking about the first floor, I'm-
Showing you a document that's referred to as existing conditions, does that show the existing kitchen area?
Yes, it does.
How would you describe that kitchen area?
As in where it's located in the building, or?
Yes, where it's located, how big it is, what you see in there, is it substantial, small?
So the kitchen area itself, separate from the dining space, is located on the North Washington Avenue side of the building, and it is, I believe, 1,500 square feet, and there is existing equipment that we had tested that works in there. And it is adjacent to the dining space, which is 1,240 square feet, as previously stated, which we are proposing would be the dining area of the restaurant.
All right, if you would continue.
You know, I guess, to continue on, the fact that the infrastructure is already there, it also makes the most sense to have the restaurant and these kind of community uses in Building One, because we really consider this the face of the project, as it is on the main thoroughfare, thoroughfare of the existing road network, which is North Washington Avenue. And the main entrance would be located right there, so it makes it the most visible and accessible place of the project. Also, a very important thing to note, as to why this building will be repurposed and rehabilitated, is that it will cost $1.5 million approximately to demo the building, making it cost prohibitive not to rehabilitate. Jerry will speak more to other uses as to why this is cost prohibitive, as to why they would be cost prohibitive.
Can I interrupt you with a question at this time?
Yes.
Looking at your plans, remember from last time, you had a small bar area in the restaurant, is that eliminated? Did I hear you correctly, all drinks are going to be served to the table at the dining?
Yes, but there will, there will be a small, kind of six-stool bar at the, in the restaurant.
So that has not been eliminated? I didn't hear you say anything about that before, that's my question, maybe I missed it.
Oh, sorry, I know it's part of the restaurant, it's still in there.
Okay, thank you.
USG, we also plan to use the gallery space as event space too, if people want to book that for events. We envision this space to be used for community gatherings, showers, weddings, corporate events, that sort of thing. We think that also some events may want to occupy the restaurant space as well. Events would take place, we are proposing, during the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 12:00 a.m., basically same hours as the restaurant, except for two hours earlier in case there's a corporate event. It's important to note that the restaurant and events, and every use on the property throughout the entire project, would be managed and operated by Urban Smart Growth or an affiliate, to ensure operational compatibility with the project's other uses and its tenants and neighbors. I'll now move on to the second and third floor of the building, unless anyone else has questions on Building One before I continue.
I think we should, maybe, for a second.
I would say, let's, let's hear all three floors of them.
Okay. The plan for the second floor is to have seven offices ranging in size between approximately 250 square feet and to 395 square feet. The seven offices will total 2,019 square feet. All the offices will be located along the east side of the floor. Along the west side of the floor, there will be six live-work studios. Each studio meets the 600-square-foot minimum size requirement. The six live-work studios total 3,844 square feet. What we mean by live-work is a space where a tenant can both work. We usually see this in other projects where it's a freelance graphic designer, or, or a painter, or someone who just has their own law practice, and it's just themselves working, and they can also reside there if they wish. At many of our other projects, we find these very high demand because of the flexibility and affordability that they provide people. The plan for the third floor is quite similar, and there would be six offices ranging in size between 230 square feet to 250 square feet. The six offices would total 1,425 square feet, and all the offices would also be all along the east side of the floor. Similarly, to the second floor, along the west side of the floor of the, sorry, of the third floor, there would be six live-work studios. Each studio meets the 600-square-foot minimum size requirement as well. The six live-work studios total 3,908 square feet. I know that was a lot of numbers, et cetera, so to summarize, on the second and third floor of Building One, we are proposing a total of 13 offices totaling 3,444 square feet, and 12 live-work studios totaling 7,752 square feet. Lastly, the thing that I will address is parking. As I mentioned before, the entire project has 282 spaces currently on the plan, 117 of which are located in Scranton. The uses described previously on the ground floor, second floor, and third floor, according to Scranton zoning parking requirements, require 61 spaces. Therefore, because we have 117 in Scranton, we have sufficient parking for the uses we are proposing in Scranton.
I have a question on the live-work spaces.
Mm-hmm.
What do they consist of? Just, and, what do they consist of? Is there a kitchen? Is there a bathroom? Is it a typical apartment?
Yes, there's a bathroom, and there's a small kitchen.
Okay.
Our architect will be able to kind of give you some more specifics on that.
Well, I was going to say, some of the drawings seem to have it, and then some of them don't, as far as the plumbing. Okay, thank you.
The access to the restaurant, I know there were some issues about coming off of North Washington Avenue and into the restaurant. Are we still trying to have a, an entrance on, on North Washington Avenue?
You mean pedestrian entrance, or using the driveway?
No, pedestrian.
Yes, there's still a pedestrian working entrance in the building that we would use.
Where? Is that, is that on the, the North Washington Avenue side?
Yes.
I thought we said last time that that wasn't going to be there, at the initial testimony you gave the first time, it was going to be closed off with panic doors, panic bars on the inside, just for an egress, emergency egress.
But still something we are happy to consider, that was something in conversations with the Green Ridge Revitalization Committee, something we are willing to offer to mitigate noise and, I guess, pedestrian traffic. However, as I'm sure we'll get to later this evening, those discussions, we couldn't reach a middle ground, and therefore, we don't know if we're going to be proposing that, if, you know-
I thought, I thought it was kind of agreed upon at your last testimony here. So, has that changed, so it's off the board at this point there, that, that-
Wouldn't say it's off the board, but we're not committing to that being a exit-only entrance at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Calling your attention to the master plan that's up there, where's the primary entrance for Building Number One going to be?
The primary entrance-
Maybe this answers your question.
... which is offset on the property, you know, signs will direct people in there, and sure, people driving in, we hold it in the building, and make a place of people walking into the property.
I'm going to, if you can go back to the podium, so we can hear, I'm going to go back to my question again, and just sitting here thinking, refresh my mind, one of the concerns was parking in front of the building, and that's what we agreed upon at that time, that to eliminate that parking concern for the neighbors, that that door would be closed off. And I, and I left that hearing with the assumption that was going to be, but I mean, we've changed, it's, it's a new hearing, I guess, so I, I'm-
Yep, sorry.
I just thought that, that was something that I could look forward to still being in that package tonight, but-
Yeah, I think what she's saying, it's not off the table, but it's part, it could be part of it.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, it was on the table last time, and I thought we left here with it on the table.
Did you guys have a meeting after the, the zoning board to try to negotiate stuff? Is that what happened?
Are you referring to the Green Ridge Revitalization Committee?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
And then that's when things kind of fell apart, after the meeting?
Yeah, we can address how those conversations went, I'm sure we both will. But we are committed to not, to agreeing to no off-street parking, or sorry, no on-street parking. We aren't going to get in the way if Scranton wants to make that there's no street parking on, we have sufficient parking on site, and we're not going to object to no on-street parking outside of the property.
And I, I don't mean to badger at this question, anything like that, but in all honesty, there has to be some middle ground that you people could have came to, instead of coming back here all the time and everything. I'm, I'm not finding fault anybody, so relax, but I'm just saying, I would like to see this just worked out to where like, you know, it, yeah, I, I agree, I mean, my point is, because now we're going to go back to the drawing board again, I feel, we're going to meet with the, the neighbors again, like, tonight, and I don't think, none of us want to sit here the whole night to negotiate stuff out. I would have thought that a lot of this would have taken place by now, but we'll continue with what we're doing here.
I, we prepared something on behalf of Urban Smart Growth that addresses the conversations. If you'd like us to read them, I'm happy to do so. We also wanted to reach a middle ground, and, I mean, to be perfectly honest, having the North Washington entrance as exit-only was the smallest point, and I can't make that decision right now, that's obviously an owner decision to make. I'm, I confidently speak that that's still something that they'd be willing to do, but unfortunately, as we explained to Green Ridge Revitalization Committee, many of their conditions and things that they were trying to get us to agree to, were going to make financing on this project absolutely impossible, and they also wanted us to agree to connecting all their conditions in a complicated way that, and would also give them authority to revoke zoning if there was an issue, which Scranton Code and zoning has cures and remedies that would be dealt with individually. So therefore, and we explained that to them upfront, and at the meeting, and afterwards in agreement negotiations, and they weren't willing to budge on that. We offered lots of compromises, and they were going to offer no return in support, they were going to keep objecting at every step, so we sent them our comments, the latest draft they had sent us, and we never heard back from them. So conversations ceases to exist because they weren't really, really to budge on things, and we were offered quite a few compromises.
Okay, well, let's continue with the testimony, then, and move forward.
I'm finished, so I will pass it off to Jerry, our architect.
Not, not yet, not yet.
Do we share the microphone in this instance, or should I sit down and use that one?
Oh, use that mic, sure. Say, want to switch seats with me for one second? Yeah, we'll see.
Does this work? Okay, great. Hillary, just to be clear, this is definitely going to encompass a bar, there's no question about that.
No, it's not going to encompass a bar, it's going to encompass a restaurant that will have a very small bar area where they're serving drinks.
Okay, with six seats.
It's a family restaurant.
There'll be six seats at the bar?
Yes, approximately.
Approximately, there could be more.
Probably not, the way it's designed, right now in the plans.
Okay, but we're going to serve alcohol to the people sitting at the tables?
Yes.
And we're getting, you're going to have to get a liquor license to do that?
Yes.
And what about the outdoor venue? Or is alcohol going to be served at the weddings at the outdoor venue as well?
Potentially. We'll have to get a liquor license, and we'll have to comply by the rules and code of the liquor license.
Okay, now, with regard to the outdoor venue, that's where you're going to have your events that you described to us as weddings and concerts, is that correct?
And indoor, and potentially outdoor, yes.
Okay.
In the lower courtyard, and, well, sorry, in the upper courtyard.
And they're going to go till about midnight?
Yes.
Okay, and there's going to be noise associated with those, there's no denying that?
Yes, there's going to be noise, but we'll have to comply with noise ordinance.
Now, have you provided any updated or new traffic study for us, or for the board, that's- required under the zoning ordinance regarding a non-typical day with traffic?
Yes, we have a report, and we have a traffic engineer who will be speaking to the results of the report tonight.
Is it the same one you gave us in the past?
No, it's been updated.
Okay, did this person actually go to the site?
I believe so. She grew up around Scranton. She'll be able to speak to that.
Okay, so that, someone's going to testify at this evening?
Correct.
All right, what about stormwater management plan?
Pardon?
Have you obtained a stormwater management plan?
No, that is something that's dealt with later on in the entitlement and planning process.
Now, with regard to, you start to talk about parking, you're going to have about 282 spaces. Just to be clear, the green space in front on North Washington Avenue, the soccer field is going to be turned into cement parking, correct?
Not cement, but it will be parking.
Okay, fair enough. And then, in the back, you're also going to be asking for a special exception so that you can create, I'm going to use the term cement, maybe concrete or some other form, parking closer to Meadow Brook Creek. Is that accurate?
I don't know where you're referring to in the...
This is all relevant.
If I can, if we could, we have the plan here, if I can just identify, you're on the plan, talking. Are we talking about Scranton, or are we talking about Dunmore?
I don't know, but they told me I'm allowed to talk about all nine buildings here tonight.
The stream doesn't hit the property in Scranton.
[laughing].
According to the Penn DEP.
All right, let me go back to my original question. The stream that we believe does hit Scranton because it's been involved in a long litigation with the city of Scranton. Nonetheless, you're asking to create a parking lot closer to that stream, is that correct? I'm asking her, please, Bill.
If I can, while my objection goes, Meadow Brook Creek starts in Dunmore, it goes all through the city of Scranton, it ends up down on Mylar Avenue and goes into the Lackalana River. The portion of Meadow Brook Creek on our property is in Dunmore, but that being said, we have an engineer here that could actually address the technical questions, and I'll ask him that myself.
So, is Hillary telling me that she doesn't know, or are you telling me that Hillary doesn't know?
What I'm...
Because it's a speaking objection, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, it's, one, it's not relevant, they've already ruled that the material, we hit the parking requirements in Scranton, on the Scranton site. This is off the Scranton site. That all being said, I have an engineer that can actually provide testimony, relevant testimony asked to that. But to the extent that you know anything with regard to it, go right ahead.
Yeah, to my understanding, a 30-foot step setback from the stream is required, and according to the plans that we have seen from Penn DEP, which Jerry will speak to more, and where we're proposing parking in Dunmore, we do not encroach on that 30-foot setback.
You're asking for a special exception for it? It says in our paperwork.
Bill, I don't...
Dan, do we really care about parking in Dunmore for...
Well, it's close to Meadow Brook Creek, and the creek runs through Scranton?
Not on this project.
All right, I'll wait for the engineer to maybe comment on that.
Architect.
Oh, okay. Hillary, is there any timeframe for the completion of the eight other buildings once the front building is done?
Yes, we plan to do all nine buildings together. We've never said we were going to do one building without the others, and in discussions with you, we offered, the GRC, we offered to start construction on four of the eight Dunmore buildings before we opened up Building One. That was just for the board's information. That was the compromise we were willing to make with them. It was one of the many compromises that wasn't sufficient. By no means are we planning to do Building One and not do the other buildings. We are planning to do the whole project together as an integrative project. It doesn't work unless the whole project is done together with the uses that we are proposing.
Hillary, were you involved in the email that was sent to me saying that you and your team would only sign off on any type of an agreement if I, on behalf of my committee, signed off on every resident in Green Ridge so that nobody could ever go and fight at the planning commission, at the liquor license, or the city engineer? I had the email to prove it. Are you familiar with that?
I don't know.
Well, were you part of the email?
I don't quite remember, but I would like...
Mrs. Dempsey, could you back away just a little bit from the microphone?
From the microphone, please.
Oh, yeah, sure, sorry.
Sure, Attorney Jones, because I can't hear him.
What do you want me to? Oh, okay.
Okay, is that better?
I'm here presenting a case, so what we're looking at is how someone got sent this in.
I think she spent, she spent 10 minutes on it. I didn't really think it was really...
Attorney Jones, I think what the sonographer asks is that when you speak, you take it, the microphone, and when she speaks, she takes it, because...
You're right, thank you.
[laughing]. Hillary, for the people that you are planning to have as residents of the facility, is it fair to say that they will need to move their vehicles between the hours of 12:00 PM and 6:00 AM?
No, I don't know where that, I'm not sure what you mean by that question.
Okay, so 12:00 PM is lunchtime, and 6:00 AM is in the morning. Do you think there is a fair chance that the people who reside at your property will need to move their vehicles during that time, perhaps to go to work, to go out for an event in the evening?
Oh, well, if they're going to leave their property, yes, and they're going to be driving somewhere to leave the property, they're going to have to take their vehicle.
During those timeframes?
I already actually forgotten the timeframe that you mentioned, if you could repeat.
Sure, I can. 12:00 PM to 6:00 AM.
I mean, I would say that if anyone's going to leave the property in their vehicle, they'll be taking it at all times of the day.
Okay.
That's part of living and working and, I don't know.
And as you have it set up now, all entry and all exit will be on North Washington Avenue, is that correct?
No.
Where is the other entry and exit? The loading dock?
Jefferson.
The one that's closed, and it is one-way when it opens up?
Pardon?
Jefferson Avenue that's closed right now?
If we can, Jefferson Avenue is a thoroughfare in the borough of Dunmore presently only because I drove out there yesterday. They're replacing the bridge on it. We're not going to be open before the bridge is done.
Okay, so...
That has always been an entrance and exit for this facility. I don't know if that facilitates moving it.
It's just an interesting dynamic, because I'm asking a question of a person, I'm getting an answer from the attorney.
Right, right. I'd like to hear, where are the, where is the entrance and where is the exit?
Well, right now, we have an entrance in Scranton, which is the North Washington driveway.
Mm-hmm.
We have the Jefferson, and there is a small entry on Evelyn Street, because there will be parking there, so they'll have to use that to get to the parking spaces there.
Could you, could you show us on your display here?
This is, this is, and we can see this is a parking, Evelyn Street is here, and there, there's a complete line of car vehicles over here, without any access to car vehicles and can't drive or park anywhere near those spaces. Jefferson is here. Is that...
Are these entrances and exits?
Okay, now, that's the, that's the entrance. Where are the exits?
I was just, that's what I was just asking, are the entrances and exits, are they both? You can enter and exit from the same?
Yes.
Hillary, Evelyn Street, you and I can agree, that cannot take two cars at one time, is that correct?
Our traffic engineer, who's here, says that the street is actually, she'll speak to this more, is 18 feet wide, I believe, and that is technically a two-way road.
This is ridiculous. Okay, I have no further questions, I have...
If I can, just a few follow-up. With regard to the entrance and exit on North Washington Avenue, Hillary, has that always been there serving this particular facility?
Yes.
And with regard to the entrance and exit on Jefferson Avenue, has that always been there for this facility?
I believe so, yes.
And with regard to the entrance and exit for Evelyn Street, has that always been there servicing this facility?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. The small area in the back that's used to access the property, is that a paved area off of Evelyn Street?
Yeah, to the best of my understanding, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Guys, you'll have a chance to speak when you come up. Please do not speak from the audience.
If I can, I'd like to call my next witness.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear to testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God?
I do.
Name and address, please.
My name is Jerry Gutierrez, 449 South 43rd Street, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. I am owner, managing principal, and project manager for Group G Architecture and Planning Offices in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania.
Spoke your last name.
Thank you.
Sir, do you have any licenses from the state of Pennsylvania, and if so, what disciplines?
I'm licensed as an architect in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, as well as a few other states, yes.
Thank you very much. You've heard the testimony of Ms. Levin, is that correct? You were here today?
Yes.
And you're familiar with the master plan?
I am.
If you could, could you please describe for the, for the, beginning with Building Number One, what's demonstrated on that particular plan?
So, what you see here is basically the overall plan for the entire campus, which is bounded by North Washington, Electric, Jefferson, and Evelyn. In any adaptive reuse projects that our office has done, and we've done a lot of adaptive reuse projects over the course of our 25, 28-year history, a lot of them in historical districts, we've done over a dozen projects of adaptive reuse at the Philadelphia Navy Yard, as well as some other locations. What we try to do is we look at the existing structures that are in place on the, on the site, and we try to understand what, what's the value that's available to us to recoup, to maintain, that we can restore, that we can build from. And we try to align that approach with our client's approach, which in this case is brick, and they are interested in introducing and breathing new life into properties like this. And so, when we look at this property with Hillary and Lance, we saw a beautiful piece of property, very gracious, covered with landscaping, a very nice place to walk around, a nice place to live. We can envision people wanting to come live here. There were some, there were some hesitation about what we can have in all of these properties. Those are the buildings that were built in the 1800s. Because of their previous uses, they were actually configured as dormitories, apartments, small apartments. So, they were very much aligned with the idea that those could be readily developed as multifamily residential. But in any of brick investments projects that deal with projects of this magnitude, what we look for are primal in a way. It starts with these buildings, which is shelter, and along with shelter, we think about people living in those buildings. So, when people are together, there's community, and in community, there are stories, there's songs, but then we also think about what do those people need? They need food, they need a place to gather. And that's where Building One comes in. I know that Hillary mentioned earlier that because of the location of Building One, it presents itself at the very front of the property along North Washington Avenue. So, it becomes the face of the development. It becomes, in a sense, the living room, the entrance foyer, the kitchen, the dining room for the entire development. And when we talk about living room, dining room, kitchen, that's where we want the public to come in. That's where we want to present other uses that are compatible and create synergy with the residential portions of the development, which is why Building One becomes a linchpin for the development. It creates the energy and life that the residents can be part of, as well as an ability for Building One and the areas around it to provide a common gathering space, not just for the residents, but also for people from the community to come and enjoy the amenities that Hillary mentioned, a coffee bar, small restaurant with a little bar. The courtyard can serve as additional amenity spaces and an ability to have live-work and offices up on the upper floors. These are all standard semi-public, public spaces that allow community to gather from the public, as well as the residential community that's in the other buildings. It's also, this corner presents itself as well as a natural place to provide additional parking, because we understood that based on both Scranton and Dunmore zoning code for the uses that we were exploring, that we needed to provide additional parking. In looking at the entire property, given that Meadow Brook has a topography that's not conducive to developing parking nor building, we felt that the most logical place to provide parking is this corner, which is currently made playful. It's flat, but it's also high above the street on North Washington, as well as Jefferson or Electric. It's currently planted, a little bit of planting is present along that edge, and we plan to enhance that planting with additional trees, as well as an understory of shrubbery that's about three to four feet. So, in any case, we see that the topography of that level land is approximately six to eight feet, depending on where you are, along the road here, six to eight feet above the road, and with additional landscaping and tree planting, the cars that will be in that parking lot will hardly be visible from the street. As Hillary mentioned, we have primary access and egress from the property to North Washington. This is the existing darkroom. From there, it's a logical place, even though there is an existing formal entry to the building off of North Washington. We felt that because we're, because of most of our patients and visitors are coming in on North Washington Avenue, parking is here, so the logical place for an entrance is from the parking lot through a proposed small addition that straddles Building One and leads off to the existing tunnel, enclosed walkways to the other buildings. Any questions so far? So, again, we're providing enhanced landscaping. We want to, we really want to play up that this has a bucolic environment. We don't want to take away from that. We want to actually add and enhance what's already there. So, we're adding landscaping along the street edges. We're also adding landscaping along Evelyn Street. I will, I would like to take a moment to speak on the floodway. We did add some additional parking along, there is existing parking, but we added additional parking here. We see that as satellite parking for employees of the campus. We had early conversations with the county, Department of Environmental Protection, who referred us to the Commonwealth DEP relative to the floodway. In discussing, they provided to us the footprint of the existing floodway, which we superimposed on this plan, and they said to us that if we were to move forward, we would have to submit technical drawings to them so that they can, and we would have to survey the property, because the information they gave us for that floodway that FEMA developed was about 20, 25 years old, and given the period of time and the way nature works, this floodway footprint might have changed since then, so we would have to provide a new survey of that floodway so that when we submit technical drawings to DEP, they can confirm that we are compliant with the floodway system. Okay? Any questions so far? From this point on, I want to walk you through, even though Hillary gave you some idea of the configuration of the building and the uses, I would like to... the configuration of the building and the uses, I would like to...
If I can, just for the purposes of the record, we're referring to the master plan that has been marked as an exhibit and distributed to the board, as well as to opposing counsel, and I believe we're on page two of that. Thank you.
So what you see here on this board, and I think you have that on your left, my seventeenth, we have the floor plan of the first floor, and as you can see, in extending how we look at the site, we also look at the buildings in terms of what is it offering us? What are its available strengths that we can enhance on, that can add value to development, that can provide the synergy and the life for the entire building, as well as development? One of the things that we saw is that there's this, this floor was used as a cafeteria. It has a really, really large, in guts, you have a commercial-sized kitchen. We've done a lot of restaurants. And our typical ratio of restaurant dining area and kitchen is that kitchens are typically a third of the dining area. In this case, our restaurant is a little less than the kitchen. The kitchen is larger than the restaurant. So in this case, having done kitchen design in restaurants, this is, in a sense, a gold nugget. This represents in money, in cost of construction, this represents about $600,000 worth of construction. So we accepted that that was a really, really good thing for the building, and potentially for the entire development, which is why the restaurant is located at this corner, because it provides a connection to the existing kitchen, it provides a connection to an event gallery space, which is wide open, flexible. It also provides a connection to be able to spill out into this courtyard outside between building one and building nine. So those are good things that we saw about this building. Building floors two and three actually offer very similar floor plans. And in this case, again, we saw the value in how it was currently configured. There's a central hallway, you see here in yellow, that connects an existing stair enclosure on both ends. There's an existing elevator in the middle, classic double-loaded corridor. What we saw there was an opportunity to maintain that corridor, maintain the construction, maintain the construction of that corridor, and try to maintain as much of the existing classrooms slash offices, as well as restrooms that are already in place. We knew that we would have to add a little bit more to support the live-work units, but the cost to develop this building into something that works really well, hand-in-hand with the rest of the property, was just, it was too natural, it was too logical to move away from. It's actually a series of images. These are three-dimensional images, sort of character images. This is at a very early stage of design. This is what we envision it might look like as you walk through, or as you arrive at the building. So if you look at image one, you're really looking, if you're northbound on Washington Avenue, you're looking towards building one, and you can see some of the enhanced landscaping that we're seeing along the edge. You're going to see a ground sign that announces that this is Marywood South. You turn here for the primary entrance, and then as you turn off that primary entrance, you will see the proposed entry pavilion. This entry pavilion will be a marker for the entire development. This will allow you to get into the restaurant, as well as to the rest of the enclosed walkways.
If I can, you referenced that as the entrance to it, and I know on page one of the master plan, in describing these buildings, there are nine buildings, is that correct?
There are nine buildings.
And they're all interconnected, is that correct? And is that something that historically grew out of the fact that this was the oral stool, and I believe for whatever handicap reasons, all these buildings are interconnected, is that correct?
That's correct.
And with regard to the heating systems for the, some of the buildings that are, if we can look at page one of the master plan, if I were to take a look at, say, buildings two through nine, they share a common heating system, is that be correct?
There's an underground steam tunnel that connects all the buildings.
All right, and with regard to the other utilities for that, are they all shared on-site? Are the buildings interconnected with regard to that?
They currently are, yes.
Okay, now, just overall, and I didn't mean to interrupt your testimony, just so they have a clear report, you're familiar with the condition of all these buildings, is that correct?
Sir, I can't hear you.
Oh, my apologies. You're familiar with the buildings, is that correct?
Generally speaking, yes.
All righty. Now, with regard to the buildings themselves, how would you describe their condition?
I've seen buildings, and specifically, I've seen buildings from different cities, and I would say that I was amazed and really delighted to see that these buildings have really, really good bones, but I've seen windows broken in, existing historic fabric windows, doors that have suffered, because some of the windows have been opened, some birds have come in, and birds in buildings are not kind to floors. So there, it's a really wonderful cluster of buildings, a lot of character, very worthwhile preserving and restoring.
Now, with regard to the particular buildings that you've taken, well, you're familiar with the buildings on-site, you're familiar with the zoning ordinance for the city of Scranton, is that correct?
That's correct.
And with regard to this particular property and the uses that are allowed, have you formed an opinion as to whether those uses could be adapted for use in these particular buildings?
Sure. That was one of the first pieces of research and analysis that we did, not just for this project, for any project we undertake for adaptive reuse. We look at the existing zoning, we look at what by right uses are available to us, and we try to understand what would it take, from a design and construction standpoint, to develop the property, in this case, the building, so that it would be fully compliant with the current zoning code? I know that, given the uses that are in INSI, a lot of them are, a lot of them are intensive in terms of needing, requiring higher levels of finishes and fixtures because of the institutional and what I call boutique uses. And I refer to care and treatment centers for children, healthcare-related uses such as offices, administrative functions for healthcare institutions, colleges or university. These are all uses that are requiring very durable materials and systems, because a lot of people will walk through that building, and they will be used intensively. So it requires a higher level, more expensive materials and systems.
Can you explain to the board what that means? I know you've explained it to me, but...
Sure. For example, if we're talking about corridors and these types of uses, we're looking at either stone or hard flooring. Carpet, you're going to have to replace that every year. So there's a labor charge, there's a material charge and all of those things. Walls get dinged up. There's a maintenance aspect as well to these types of uses, because there's turnover and people that come and go. Public use, that's not familiar with these facilities, they don't really pay attention, and they don't really care about whether they're going to turn the corner and ding the corner. So there's a lot of maintenance associated with these types of uses. We talk about special building systems that are required for healthcare-related uses, highly technical, they need to be supported plumbing-wise, electrically, as well as HVAC, again, adding cost to the construction. When we talk about home, group homes, we talk about requiring further subdivision of existing spaces. So we're talking about new walls, and where we have new walls, we have more doors. More doors and more walls means that we have to serve each individual space with heating and air conditioning, so more ductwork. So there's a layering that happens as you move through a lot of the uses that are by right under the zoning designation. All of these things add much more cost than what we have proposed. We're reusing a lot of the existing walls, we're reusing a lot of the existing bathrooms. There's just a lot of things that we see value that's already there, that also works really well with the rest of the development.
What would the average cost for the existing building, say, building one, with regard to any of the permitting uses? Have you formed an opinion on that?
Sure.
I'm going to object to run speculation and foundation.
Well, he's an architect. I imagine, if I can, in the course of your business, you actually form opinions with regard to adaptive reuses of buildings, is that correct?
That's correct.
Would it be fair to say that's probably primarily what you do for a living?
That's about 75, 80% of our core practice.
Okay, so I'm going to reiterate my question with regard to, say, building number one on this site. Have you formed an opinion as to the average cost for the renovation or reuse of the existing building for any of the uses that are outlined in the City of Scranton zoning ordinance?
Same objections to that relevance.
It's the basis of my...
We're going to allow it. We're going to allow it. Go ahead.
It's not our problem.
I said we were allowing it.
I would just ask him to itemize the difference, like, for example, senior center's going to have a different cost than, you know, as he spoke of, that requires the ducting and things like that.
Are we talking about the cost of this particular building?
Yes. Well, first, let me lay my foundation for it.
Yeah.
With regard to adaptive reuses for the building, generally, what are the costs for an existing structure? Well, this structure, building number one.
So for any structure, and specifically this structure, we look at code issues. We have to first comply with current building codes, life safety codes, as well as the technical codes, HVAC, electrical, plumbing, fire protection. Those are all things that are basic things that we have to comply with. So there's a layer of costs associated with that, that starts at, in this case, because we're reusing a lot of the systems that are already in place, our cost for systems, building systems, infrastructure, is lower than what it would be if we introduced a different kind of use that may not use because of the way it's laid out, because of how their requirements may be greater than the requirements that we have here. This is a very low, low-need, low-supply use.
By that, you're saying your proposed uses are low-supply uses?
That's correct.
Now, harking back to the zoning ordinance and the particular uses that are allowed as of right, what would the cost of the, to refit for any of those particular uses?
Sure. I think you're...
I object to that.
Yeah, I'm going to say there's a number of uses that could be in R1, or whatever we get here.
If you can, if you, would you...
I don't see the relevance of that. I'm going to sustain that objection.
If I can, just as an offer of proof, with regard to a variance, the building itself, if, one of the issues that this board is going to have to decide is, can any of the uses that are allowed in this particular district be retrofitted into this building? And the case law allows that if you can put those in there, if they are not cost-effective, then they are not allowed. That's it. That's why we're here today. That's the primary issue that goes to the variance, that goes to the validity variance with regard to...
You can ask of that particular question.
Well, that was it. Consider it asked.
What is it, Mr. President?
Can you restate the question?
Yes, with regard, you're familiar with the zoning ordinance, is that correct?
Yes.
And you're familiar with the particular uses in that zone. In fact, if I may approach the witness. I may have to hand to a section of the zoning ordinance. Have you taken a look at those particular uses?
I have.
Okay. Now, with regard to those particular uses that are allowed as of right, you're familiar, and I think you've testified to it, but, so that we could all follow you, that are not architects in the room, you've talked about group homes. Is that one of the uses that's allowed there?
Yes.
All righty. And you've also talked about care and treatment centers for children, is that correct?
Yes.
And you've also talked about, I would presume, offices, administrative, and healthcare institutions for colleges and universities.
Yes.
And I would ask you also to consider, it has membership clubs. Are you familiar with that? Does your testimony go to that?
Can you clarify, membership club?
What was that?
Membership club. Can you...
Membership club? Well, it's not specifically defined, but by that, I would say, yeah, I guess, a country club of some sort, or, I know there's the Downtown Athletic Club in your city of Philadelphia. I've seen it. It has a nice swimming pool, eating facilities, et cetera. And I believe you can sleep in that particular amenity.
Very familiar. Union League Philadelphia Rocket Club.
And also places of worship with regard to that, additionally, cultural center. So you've taken a look at all of these uses, and if I've missed any, please correct me. Now, with regard to these particular uses, can they, would you have to retrofit this building for those uses? And if so, why? And what would it cost?
Well, why don't we just ask him, is it economically feasible to retrofit this building for any of those uses?
Yeah, if you would.
And be done with it?
Would it be feasible to retrofit this building for any of those uses that you presently, that are allowed as of right? And if so, what would it cost?
I think what I can tell you is how much, the range of the costs associated with converting this existing building to accommodate the uses that are by right.
Yes, that's what Mr. Penataro is asking.
In terms of whether it's feasible, that's a different question.
I stand corrected. If you would, please give us the, within your discipline, the cost.
Right. So with these types of uses, we're looking at a range of $90,000 to $120,000 a square foot. So at 33,000 square feet and some change, that's about $4 to $5 million, I believe. I don't have my calculator with me, but that's about what it would take. And that doesn't include what we call soft costs, which are design and engineering fees. And there is a greater amount of money that is associated relative to the maintenance and operations of these types of buildings that are often greater than the initial upfront cost of construction and design.
And I believe that's what you said, we're finishing cost in higher use. By that, you mean group homes, membership clubs, care and treatment facilities, cultural centers, offices of whatever type, places of worship, that there are high-traffic areas as opposed to the uses that we're proposing, is that correct?
That's correct.
And that impacts upon the materials and then the material cost, is that what you were getting at?
That is correct.
All righty. Alrighty. Now, with regard to the specialized system and finishing cost, there, I take it, you've concluded that they would be higher than our proposed uses?
May I?
Yeah, I think you made, I think you made your point, yeah. Yeah, I think you made your point. Let's go to something else.
If you would, and I, this is before we had digressed into this, if you would go back to your master plan and explain what is on the, I think you were through the first floor. I think you described that there was the cafeteria area and a, I guess, a kitchen area of approximately six hundred thousand dollars existing, correct? Alrighty. You've also talked about the additional floors, if you want to pick up wherever you were at in your testimony. I'd appreciate that.
Thank you. I think we ended up here. Entrance to Building One, as well as entrance, if you turn right, you would move towards the rest of the buildings. This entrance pavilion, and you can see this in the book, and this entrance pavilion, you enter in this direction, so it will allow you to enter left into, past the coffee bar, past the gallery space, and actually allow you to get into the restaurant, common restrooms, elevator. It will also allow you the ability to come through and be able to see and access the courtyard. And that's what you said.
Okay, let me, let me ask you a question on that. If that's the case, and your parking is on this side, the soccer field side, what if any entrance from North Washington Avenue is needed?
That's an operational question, I think, that I would have to defer to order.
Because it sounds like you're trying to make the entrance where that 1.11 is, that's your main entrance, your parking is on that side too. I don't, I don't, right. Why would anybody come in North Washington Avenue?
If I can, just to follow it, if you can go back to page one of the master plan?
Talking about this?
No, page one, please. Alright, can you point out Building Number One? Alrighty. And can you show the entrance off of the parking lot that is proposed? Alrighty. And if I can, we're looking at page one, so that would be directly adjacent to the parking lot. Does that answer your question, Dan?
Well, as I said, everybody's going to come in from the parking, through that main entrance, why would anybody come in from North Washington Avenue?
That, if you can, can you show Mr. Penataro where North Washington Avenue is?
Washington Avenue, I think you're referring-
Not referring to that entrance. Why would anybody come in that entrance? There's no parking, there's no main entrance.
If I can approach. North Washington Avenue is right here, is that correct?
That's correct.
And it directly enters into the apartment.
That's correct.
And the Building Number One is adjacent to that apartment.
That's correct.
So if somebody was coming into, say, their apartment in Building Number One, they come almost adjacent to the Building Number One right in, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and if they were going to go to the restaurants for Building Number One, would they come in direct proximity to North Washington Avenue and come into that?
Right.
Alrighty. If they were going to go to a live-work facility on the second or third floor of this particular facility, would they also come directly off of North Washington Avenue?
Generally speaking, we saw primary entrance from vehicular traffic coming in off of North Washington, parking here, and once they park here, it's an easy connection to come through this property. I know we-
That's right.
Yeah.
I think that the question is, the other entrance in the center of the building that goes out to North Washington Avenue.
Yeah, you'd actually have to go out of your way to use that entrance.
To use that, to use that entrance.
Misunderstood. I thought you meant for vehicular traffic.
Oh, no, 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 for walking into the building.
No, I got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I guess, I mean, maybe I'm out of line, but I have another question.
No, but I understand the question now. I thought you meant for vehicular traffic.
No, I meant, I meant, once you-
That's what I wasn't catching.
No, once, once you park and you get out of your car, you're going to go in that main entrance. There's no reason for you to go out to North Washington Avenue, come around. I don't see the necessity for having an entrance there.
I understand your question.
Okay. The other question I have, and maybe this, he may or may not be able to answer it, and I'm just getting it, trying to get it in my head, this bar within the restaurant, is it more similar to a Sambucus setup where you have a bar and a separate room for the, for the eating, for the restaurant? Or is it more similar to a Cibios-type restaurant where you have the bar seating adjacent to the eating area itself? And maybe Hillary could answer that.
She can. If I can, I'd like to recall.
I'm just trying to picture this in my mind, where this bar is.
We're here to answer the questions.
If you look at Page Six, and this is a view, if you're walking in, imagine yourself walking in in this direction, so the first thing you'll see is the image of the restaurant, which is represented in Page Six. So that's what you'll see. So relatively, it's an open dining room with tables and a hall, and in the corner is a very short bar. You can see it here on the left.
Okay, so it's not a separate room, it's within the restaurant itself?
It's within the restaurant.
It's more, more a Cibios-type setup, in other words.
If you can, if we can, I'd like to call Hillary, so she can explain that. Obviously, that's, a lot of people have a concern with regard to that, if you would.
Jerry did a good job explaining, but Attorney Penataro was actually at Cibios earlier today, and so I just wanted to say that, yes.
Okay. Okay, just so we, so the board could picture it in their mind where this quote-unquote bar is.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
My apologies, my field research, Scranton bars and restaurants.
You weren't with the Cibios today, huh?
No.
Are you done with the direct testimony?
With, if I can have a moment. With regard to the particular, well, I think you've hit the, the cost of it. Have you formed an opinion with regard to the cost of Building Number One?
Objection.
With, well, we actually have it. Two is with regard to, and I will rephrase it, with regard to the uses that are in the particular ordinance, have you formed an opinion as to the, I know you've given us a cost to it, as those by right, if so, what if that?
I think, I think we already asked and answered that.
Well, I'm asking him for his opinion now. He did give the factual one. I'm just asking for the conclusion, which would be his opinion.
Well, he gave it, he gave the conclusion.
Well, I'd ask him to reiterate. Maybe I missed that.
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Same objection, no objection.
Thank you. Answer.
We have done some very preliminary pricing, and we call it cost opinion, okay? Based on what we are able to save with Building One's existing fabric, and that we're able to save a lot of the existing plumbing risers, all the, a lot of the walls on the upper floors, we estimate, in our opinion, that we're looking at a project that's about fifty dollars a square foot.
And with regard to any of the uses, if we were to put those into the structure, you've given a number for that, would you say they're cost-effective, cost-prohibitive, cost-neutral?
The by-right uses?
Yes.
I think I gave that earlier, but I repeated, it's, it's about ninety to a hundred and twenty dollars a square foot.
And with regard to the entire building, if you, what would it, run us-
I'm sorry?
What would it cost us?
If we're looking at the fifty dollars per square foot for, as indicated here.
Right.
We're looking at about 1.6, 1.7.
Thank you.
Million, yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Gutierrez. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, great. My first question is to the parking lot in the corner where the former soccer field would be. Where would the water drain?
I'm sorry?
Where would water drain from that area of the parking lot?
So we're, we're in our early stages of design, however, we're very sensitive to stormwater. It's something that we practice in our office, it's a requirement for a lot of our bigger projects. So in dealing with stormwater, traditionally, we could do this as a traditional concrete block, but we'd prefer to move towards what we call permeable paving. We can even do recycled asphalt. That will allow stormwater to actually be slowly absorbed back into the ground instead of being released suddenly into your current infrastructures. So permeable paving is actually a much more desirable solution in this case.
And when it permeates through the parking lot, where would it go?
Goes into the ground. That's where it goes right down.
And when the ground is filled, where would then the water go?
Where it goes right down.
To the-
Goes into the ground.
Right. Since water runs downhill to the quickest waterway, go to Meadowbrook Creek?
It probably goes to Meadowbrook.
Okay.
Meadowbrook.
Have you submitted the technical plans to DEP?
We are not at that stage yet.
Okay. Could you do that at the same time? You could, the planning commission could have its time to review?
That is something that our client will have to decide on.
Okay, thank you. If I can go to the, sorry, my notes are a little messy, my apologies. If we can go to the zoning attachment three that Attorney Jones gave all of us, if we can talk, just between the differences of why one is ninety square feet and one is fifty square feet, if you can just walk me through that? Because I'm looking at, number one, you know, a care center for children, let's say we took off the restaurant and had that event space be a care center for children, how would that be more expensive?
Well, there's a cost difference. There's a cost difference.
You would, you would, you couldn't use it as a void space such as a storage area? You'd have to demo, demo that whole side of the building, the whole restaurant area?
You're talking about the use of this as a, your suggestion?
As a, as a childcare center.
As a childcare center.
Right.
So there's, there's gas here, there's food, there's effort, the floor is forty-five, very hard surface, have to visit two of the child care centers. So I have to remove the door finishes and all the ductwork, put equipment, plumbing, all of that to go away.
Why does it have to go away? That's my question, is why can't we just coordinate off, turn off the gas, not use that part of the building?
So we need not use this.
Correct.
And where are the features?
In the event space.
In this space.
In the upper floors, correct.
I, we design childcare centers. We need to provide restaurants with sugar, we need to provide fire escape rooms, we need to allow for secure check-in, check-out process, outdoor playground areas, those are all, and then we have to get approval to stay by system, all of that. So there's a level of design and construction that takes place for a lot of stuff uses like that to be avoided. Typically, we'll do it here. I would, I would write that in, but that's a different act.
So if we can go on to community center, such as a senior center, where the, where the kitchen is used to serve hot meals to the, to the seniors, and you do have access to the bathrooms, both for the daycare and the senior center through the elevators, you'll have to have them for your restaurant, I imagine, and for your event space, if you have a hundred and fifty people there, they're going to need to use the restroom, correct?
I'm just gonna, if I can just get a foundation, if we're using the whole first floor for a daycare, and it-
I would like to know where the cost difference is. Like, it seems like the exact same plan, except for just different people, children and seniors opposed to consumers.
I'm just asking for a foundation. What floor are we on, and what space are we talking about? That's all.
As for the daycare, you could use the upper rooms for the sleeping, you could use the upper rooms for arts and crafts, same with the senior center.
Yeah, I think we understand that the space could be used for other, other things. I mean, I think we understand that.
Right. And I'm just trying to understand exactly where the cost difference is, because it seems like if they were retrofitted for the same-
I don't think the cost difference matters much to us.
If I may, just one more for the record. The event space, could that be used as a museum, or aren't those almost identical uses as a gallery? Because I remember one time in one of these records, it being a gallery, wouldn't that be the same as a museum of sorts?
I teach design at the University of the Arts Museum and exhibit planning design. This is not a good space for museums. One, there's a lot of glass, okay? It's not a very secure place, and a museum is static. It doesn't allow people to come and go and gather, okay? Which doesn't allow us to have, to build the energy and vitality that's conducive to working with the rest of the development, okay?
I'm, we're only talking about this specific building, though, is my understanding. We're not talking about the rest of the development, is that correct? Are we opening the door to that? Because then, if that's so, I'd like to know if you've gone to the Dunmore Planning Commission, the regional planning commission, if we're talking about the entirety of the project, then perhaps we should talk to those people as well.
Anything we do here is contingent on Dunmore, else it will prove it.
It is contingent?
Sure, because if he can't, he's telling us he can't develop the whole thing. He can't develop one building without developing the entire project.
I believe that was one of our conditions that we recommended in the first hearing of sorts, is that there be a condition on the variance as going to the Dunmore Planning Commission, going to the regional, if necessary, going to the city engineer to see about stormwater.
If I can, and I don't mean to interrupt, as part of the saldo practice, your ordinance and the one in Dunmore, we have to do all of those things. The development side of it, I know you don't do that, but the same people that sit up there for planning, and ultimately, it goes to council, and it's the same thing in the borough of Dunmore, we have to do that for stormwater. You have a stormwater ordinance, we have to design all of that. We take all of our plans, they generally go to the planning commissions first for any approvals. Sometimes they actually have the approval authority, sometimes it goes to the next level. So with regard to that, we're not there yet. We just need the zoning relief.
Right.
Then we do the land plan, and we hit all of those.
I agree wholeheartedly. We're putting the cart before the horse. We need to have a review from the planning commission first. That's what I hear.
Well, we already agree that we're not going to vote tonight. We're not going to vote on this tonight.
If I could interject on behalf of the, the planning commission, the planning commission will review this. Outside of the zoning process, what, what's been asked for is for the, for the planning commission to make a recommendation on the special exception. That's on the zoning issue. Further down the road would be land development approval, where all the civil engineering would have to be approved, would be reviewed by the city engineer. That doesn't come in place until after zoning. There would be no purpose to have them expend the funds on that if they don't know that they could do the use. That's, that's the typical procedure.
I understand. I just also would like to know, though, how do we determine if there'll be adverse effects to our health and welfare as a neighborhood, if we don't know anything about two through eight, or two through nine, buildings two through nine? Because we have very obscure plans, possibly seven event areas, is that seven weddings going on at the same time? Like, we don't know.
Well, the planning commission will review it under our subdivision of land development ordinance. As part of that, stormwater will have to be reviewed, there'll have to be an NPDS permit issued by DEP. So even if they get the zoning approval, if they can't meet the approval standards of the subdivision of land development ordinance, the project won't go forward.
So it makes sense to have these commissions be part of the zoning as a, as a condition? So, it makes sense to have these commissions be part of the zoning as a condition to the zoning, that all of these all are met before changing it to mixed use and changing our neighborhood. If they can't do the project, they can't do the project, and should revert back to residential or institutional light.
Typically, a developer wouldn't spend the money to do that detailed engineering unless they know they have the approval under zoning.
In other words, this is step one.
That's the typical steps taken.
But without Dunmore?
Dunmore, my understanding of the law, when a land development crosses two municipalities, both municipalities have to approve it. Both municipalities get to review the application as if the whole project was in the city. So, when it's before the planning commission of Scranton as a land development, they get to review the whole project as if the project was in Scranton. Dunmore gets to review the whole project as if the whole project was in Dunmore. And both would have to approve it.
Then we would reiterate our request that there be a contingency on the variance. I'll continue with my, if you'd like. You said that Building One was built in nineteen seventy-four?
That's correct.
And it has its own heating system?
It does.
And other than the covered walkway, is it any part, infrastructure-wise, part of the eighteen eighty buildings?
No.
No. So, it can be separate and apart on its own? Doesn't have to necessarily survive or die with the other buildings?
Any of the buildings could be disconnected from the infrastructure system.
So theoretically, two through nine could be torn down or left or done away with, and it wouldn't affect Building One?
I'm talking about the infrastructure system.
Right.
Not demolishing each building.
Right. The infrastructure system of Building One is separate.
Like the steam tunnels, they are not dependent on the steam. In fact, they may not want to be using steam.
Correct. How, for Building One, you mentioned that birds and broken windows and that sort of thing have... Other than the good bones, have any, do you know of any birds? Is there a bird problem in that building? Are there broken windows of that building?
I haven't gone in there for two or three months, but I think Hillary has, so I'll defer it to Hillary.
In my experience over the last many months, probably a year now, in the times that I've walked through that building, there are birds, there are broken tiles, there are broken windows. At one point, there was caution tape outside of the building, which I assume is for safety of bricks potentially falling. You know, I'm speaking on behalf of the owner. They've seen a lot of buildings that have been blighted, and, you know, it's difficult to keep up the maintenance because it's old and it's expensive to do so. And they believe that it's right, these buildings are right at that turning point where it's just gonna become extremely expensive if they're kind of left any longer without someone paying attention to them.
Use the plural buildings. What condition is Building One, especially because it's a newer nineteen seventy-four?
Building One is in poor condition as well. I wouldn't say it's as bad, but it's also in poor condition.
All right, thank you.
If I can, just to follow up with regard to Building Number One, if you would. Are these buildings interconnected?
Yes, all of them are connected.
Was there a reason for that?
Yeah, I'm under the understanding that all the buildings were connected because it was a school and there were safety concerns for the children that attended the school. And so, they connected all the buildings as a safe way for the children and students and their visitors to move throughout the buildings. They could reach all of them, I guess, indoors.
Thank you. I have three very quick questions for the architect, am I right? Did I get that, architect? You're also adding an addition onto Building One, is that correct?
That's correct.
And what about the addition? What's that going to be? How big is that? What about the aesthetic of that?
What about the, I'm sorry?
Aesthetic.
The aesthetic. So, it's a one-story addition, it's high ceilings, okay? Because we have to straddle above the existing roof of the enclosed walkway. It also allows us to bring a lot of light in from the courtyard into that entrance area. So, we see that as a very open and transparent space that allows people entering through the entry pavilion to see the courtyard beyond as well as to be able to navigate past the coffee bar.
And from the maps you provided, it appears as if that addition faces North Washington Avenue?
Let me go to the map.
Sure.
So, this is the addition.
Correct.
It's a triangular addition, okay? So, this face of it faces the parking lot.
Right.
Okay? And the diagonal side opens out towards the courtyard.
Okay.
So, this side of it, actually, you won't see it because it's underneath the second floor of Building One. We just look, we just form the footprint on the first floor. So, this is what you'll actually see on the first floor.
Is it pretty much just a vestibule?
I'm sorry?
Is it pretty much just a vestibule?
Basically, it is. It's a big vestibule. Thank you.
It's seven hundred feet?
Let me see. It's about, it's almost twelve hundred square feet.
Okay. And then I have a quick question for you on parking. You were talking to Sam very briefly about the front parking lot, and you said that as part of your job, you're also very familiar with the zoning code. In the paperwork that has been submitted, there has been a request for a special exception for a parking lot to be closer to the creek. Are you familiar with that request?
That might have to do with this part of our parking.
Okay.
Because this is, this is the only parking area that's close to the creek.
Okay, thank you. And then one step further, are you also familiar with Section 504B of the Scranton zoning ordinance that says, "No new paved area shall be within seventy-five percent of the center of the following creeks," and they list Meadowbrook Creek specifically? Let him answer the question.
No, I'm gonna object. One Meadowbrook Creek that we have on our plan is not in the city of Scranton, so it's not relevant.
But you said I'm allowed to talk about Dunmore and Scranton tonight? All the buildings we talked about.
So far, they've interjected that we're asking for a special exception near a creek that's not in the city of Scranton. We're not asking.
The water runs into the city of Scranton. The water runs into the homes of some of these people sitting back here. I'd like an answer to the question, please.
If I can, we're not asking for any parking in the city of Scranton near the creek. So, what relevance does this have to a parking area that's in Dunmore that he's testified to? We're going to comply with the regulations and the regulations of the state of Pennsylvania. If I can get a ruling from the solicitor.
I think you're right. I'm gonna sustain the objection.
Okay. And then one final question. Were you at Cibielis for lunch today as well?
No, I was not.
You weren't? Thank you.
If I could have a follow-up, why not?
I wasn't invited.
Do you know who was? Okay, thank you.
If I may just have one question. When I have looked at the maps before, and this is toward Attorney Penatar, when I've looked at maps before in regards to Meadowbrook Creek, it still is a creek even though it goes underneath the ground.
I agree with you.
Okay, so with that question, where the creek continues in Scranton, does that parking lot in the corner have the appropriate offset that Attorney Dempsey just explained?
If I can, just by way of confirmation, if we can, if I can have a determination as to where are the dimensions and where is this underground creek? I can't fathom in my own mind how I'm gonna get an answer to this, but where is the underground creek?
Perhaps a city engineer might be able to help you with that.
No, no, I'm here tonight, so if there's a question to my witness about an underground creek that purportedly is somewhere around this property...
Again, the water runoff is gonna be handled by the planning commission, as Don King said.
And I believe the creek, at least where it crosses Electric Street, is shown on the master plan, where it goes underground. And it looks like they stop at the other side of Electric Street, but they do show where it does go underground.
Into Scranton.
Into Scranton. Well, no, I'm sorry. It's still in Dunmore at that point.
On the plan we have, it's still in Dunmore. It didn't push the creek all the way down.
We have no further questions? No further questions.
Any other witnesses?
Please raise your right hand. Do you sound me swear to testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, the help you got?
I do.
Name and address, please.
Anne Marie Vigilante, nineteen forty-three Detweiler Road. I do. Anne Marie Vigilante, V.I.G.I.L.A.N.T.E., nineteen forty-three Detweiler Road, Harleysville, PA, one nine four three eight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If I may approach, I may offer the videotape.
That's number seven there.
Anne Marie, could you give a little bit of your background for the fourth?
Sure. I'm currently a senior associate and vice president of Lang and Engineering. I oversee our traffic and transportation group in our Pennsylvania offices. I have twenty-two years of experience. I'm a registered professional engineer in four states, Pennsylvania, New Jersey, New York, and Delaware.
I have no objection. I'll stipulate to her credentials.
Okay, thank you.
If we can, because I'm quite proud of the fact of your accomplishments. Where are you from, Anne Marie originally?
I'm originally from West Scranton.
Thank you very much.
Attorney Jones, pull that microphone over.
Anne Marie, are you acquainted with this particular site?
I am.
And could you please describe for the board the site, what you undertook with regard to this particular site?
In terms of the traffic?
Yes. Did you prepare a traffic assessment for this site?
I did. I prepared a preliminary traffic assessment.
And if I, you have a copy of it?
I do.
I would ask that this be marked as number eight. Can you describe the task associated with completing the traffic assessment?
Sure. So, basically, our task was to review the current concept plan for the redevelopment. We researched available traffic volume data and maps for the surrounding roads, prepared trip generation rates, compared the estimated site trip generation rate for the proposed uses with the previous use. And then I identified potential applicable permit requirements for proposed redevelopment.
Can you describe the potential uses in subsequent traffic generation associated with the redevelopment of this site?
Sure. Hillary kind of went through these earlier, but we looked at the potential uses on this site and the proposed traffic generation associated with them. Basically, sixty-nine residential units, thirteen offices with approximately three thousand four hundred and forty-four square feet, ten bed and breakfast units, sixteen twenty-square-foot restaurant bar space, and some additional supplemental event space. For the purpose of our analysis, we conservatively combined the bed and breakfast with the residential units, because ITE trip generation rates, there is none for bed and breakfast. So, we combined the bed and breakfast with the residential units, resulting in seventy-nine units. We also combined the restaurant and the bar area to sixteen twenty-square-foot of restaurant use, again, because that's what ITE trip generation rates exist. In terms of the trip generation, we anticipate a large portion of the restaurant site-generated trips will be internal to the site. However, our numbers that I'm gonna talk about here today do not include that. They assume that the trips will be all new trips. So, we didn't look at internalization, which I'll talk to a little bit later. And then also, we assume the event space primarily used for the special events will not generate trips during the peak periods of the other uses on site. So, mainly, we're looking at the event space like Friday and Saturday nights, which don't coincide with the peak period of the other uses, the residential restaurant, things like that. So, looking at the combined site, this is the uses in both Scranton and Dunmore, we're looking at a trip generation of forty-eight additional trips in the morning peak period and fifty-five additional trips in the evening peak period. So, again, that's for the entire site combined. What that kind of results in, to put it in a little bit more layman's terms, is approximately one new trip every minute, okay, for the entire site that would be generated across the entire site. Again, if you know anything about traffic engineering, trips is entering and exit. So, that doesn't mean there's forty-eight new vehicles. It's forty-eight trips. So, that results in twenty-four additional vehicles. And in the evening peak, you had fifty-five trips, so that's really twenty-eight vehicles. So, just to clarify that a little bit. When we looked at Scranton only, as what we're here for tonight, the morning peak hour trips is twenty-four additional trips. And the evening peak hour trips is twenty-five. That, you know, again, to put it in some terms that may make more sense, is a half a new trip per minute or one new trip every two minutes on the roadway network. We also looked at some historic research of the site as it existed back when it was the state school, and we did some trip generation for that site, assuming, basically, seventy-four students would, you know, attend that school. And what we came out with is a difference in the existing trips compared to the new trips in a negative of eleven trips in the morning. So, it'd be eleven less trips than what the existing site was originally intended for. And then an additional forty-two for the evening peak period. In terms of the study, though, we anticipate all of the trips to be new trips because, you know, the state school has been closed down for a while. So, we anticipate the new trips to be the forty-eight and the fifty-five total throughout the roadway networks. We didn't take credit for the existing use. In terms of the special event space, as you know, this will be trips associated with that space when it's rented out as, you know, an art show, weddings, business gatherings, et cetera. In order to determine the potential trips associated with the special event, we looked at the most generous and the most conservative type of event that could happen there, and that's a wedding. So, if you look at ITE rates, a wedding is the most, you know, conservative of all these events. Looking at that, we looked at a few different capacity. We looked at a hundred-person capacity, a two-hundred-person capacity, a three-hundred-person capacity, and a four-hundred-person capacity. Looking at the highest use, so the four hundred, basically four hundred people that could attend an event, we'll say at once across the entire project, not just the Scranton portion of it, you're looking at a hundred and twenty new trips that will be entering an hour before and then a hundred and twenty exiting an hour after. So, if you think about it, these trips aren't on the road the entire time the event's going on. Just like a wedding, you have people coming a little ways before and then leaving after, and it all disperses. So, again, those trips we anticipate would be off-peak from the other uses on site, the office, residential, things like that, because they typically are held on a Friday night, a Saturday. Some other things to point out in the study we provided. We looked at the existing access point on North Washington Avenue. If we assumed all the trips for this entire project enter and exit that particular access point, you're looking at something like an anticipated six hundred and forty-six daily trips. Now, that existing access point is currently designed and was at one time acting as a low-volume driveway. A low-volume driveway has the ability to accommodate... A low-volume driveway has the ability to accommodate up to 1,524 two-way trips. So if you think about it, our 646, we're technically only utilizing 43% of the capacity of that actual driveway. So just something to think about when you're looking at the North Washington Avenue driveway. And again, that would, that would assume that every trip that we are producing would use that entrance and exit. Another thing to, to mention in terms of when we talk about these trips is we, again, I stated this a little bit earlier, we did not talk about, or we did not assume any internalization to the site. And by that, I mean, you know, for the restaurant, typically the uses encompassed in the development, like the residential, the office, are gonna be the main patrons of that restaurant. We don't anticipate a ton of outside traffic utilizing that restaurant space. Similarly, we did not take into account any of the multimodal split. What I mean by that is some of the residents aren't gonna have cars. They're gonna rely on Ubers and Lifts and bikes and buses. They're not actually gonna be, you know, using cars that will generate trips to that site. But again, our numbers are conservative, consuming, assuming everybody, every use is, you know, using, you know, of vehicles generated by them. So based on my knowledge of the capacity analysis and the traffic operations, I believe the site access for the post-site can efficiently accommodate the projected number of trips with no adverse impacts to the surrounding roadway network. The number of projected site-generated trips are not significant and will likely result in minimal delay and queuing for vehicles along the internal site driveway as well as along the local roads surrounding the project. So that's in a nutshell what the analysis walks through. I could take questions?
Ma'am, I've been looking at your report. Did you ever go to the site?
I did.
How many times?
Throughout my...
No, for this project?
For this site, maybe twice.
Yeah, two times.
Remember, I lived here for 25 years. What relevance does that have to this?
I'm allowed to establish a foundation here because the word estimate, assume, anticipate have been used throughout this entire report. It's based on estimated data.
Well, ITE traffic generation rates are estimated and that's how a traffic study is prepared and the numbers are calculated.
Correct. So we, let's, you and I agree that the data you used is estimated.
I'm gonna object that to mischaracterization. As this board is aware of traffic generation, you both fight. You've heard it, I did it presented here in the last month. You use accepted...
I, I think she explained how she, I think her explanation was fine.
I would like an answer to the question though.
I gave you an answer.
If I may repeat it?
The estimated trip generations is done by ITE trip generation rate, which is the known procedure that all traffic studies in Pennsylvania go by.
Okay.